People to buy into the process. Taking the, um, the information and putting it into, um, into the program. We are not that far away. We need to do a few things in our building, um, to make sure that our, our practices are in compliance with our policies. But we're not too far away because like I said, we have been proactive in making sure that we're following best practices. Every time something came out or something does come out from either post or mass chiefs, or even just, you know, uh, case, case law, we're making our changes in our policies and we're, we're practicing good practices.
Off the top of your head, has, um, something come to mind in terms of, uh, some parts different with your policies versus the accreditation?
Not with accreditation, no. We've throughout my time as a lieutenant, most of our policy wording has been consistent with accreditation wording. What has happened with police reform and the changes that the legislation has put forward? We've needed to change a few of our wordings. For example, uh, we never trained in chokeholds. We were never authorized to use chokeholds. In our policy, it was defined a little bit differently than a chokehold. So for instance, when that mandate came out through the police reform, we needed to change a little bit of our wording. That we were already following best practices. Nobody was training that, nobody would, was authorized to use them. We just need to make sure that our policy was in compliance with the post mandated wording. So that's a, that's a good example of that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on that? Yes.
Lieutenant O'Malley.
Yes, sir.
You said, you said, if I understood you, that, that this something holding you back from, holding not you, the department back from training some of the younger officers in best practices because of the cumbersomeness of, of your files? Did I understand that correctly?
No, no, we, we train our officers in, in best practices. The, the cumbersome was keeping track of the changes in our policies for the accreditation. So when, when I sit in front of my computer, I have a policy management software that I upload, um, all of our current changes to the policies. From me to now, now I have to print those out, highlight the changes, find them and put them into a folder in, in, in back of me. When I doing that five times with three different policies, six different versions, it ju, it becomes a cumbersome process. That's all, that's all I was talking about. The training of our officers in best practices has continued for a long time. We, the Yarmouth Police Department is well known for, um, our training, um, and, and our professionalism to, to keep our officers up to standards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Darkus.
What exactly happens with changing in a policy? I mean, is it just specifically done by you as the lieutenant of patrol or?
Well, uh, what happens is I end up making the, the wording change based on, um, recommended best practices, either from a policy from mass chiefs, or in this case, when we were talking about police reform, it's actual language that's given to us from, um, the legislation. So what happens is I will make the change in the policy. I will send it to our command staff, the deputy chief in chief, and they will approve it. I will take, or they'll make corrections and I will take it and I will upload it to our policy management comp, uh, software. And then I will distribute it to our officers. They need then get an alert that there's a new policy. And if it's just something as simple as a wording change, it doesn't carry much of a distinction of change rather. They'll read it, sign off on it, and it's, it's recorded. If there is something substantial, is a change where they need some training on, it depends on how substantial it is. Sometimes I will, um, put a roll call training together. Sometimes I will give the, the sergeants, uh, some instruction on how to present it at roll call. And other times, um, we'll have a more substantial training, a hands-on training or, or something along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I have, I have a question. You seem to indicate in your answer that we're not that far off of what the, um, the goals of accreditation would be. In other words, meeting those standards. But once we do meet those standards, once we are accredited, what does that bring to the department that we don't have now?
I think recognition, like I said, to be able to tell people that we're certified or we're accredited, carries some weight with our community members. It carries some weight with our, um, court officials, it carries some weight with our, our professionalism. Functionally, we're already doing the stuff that we need to be doing. The, the, um, the title just adds a little bit more to our credibility as a, as an agency.
Okay, I'm going to go for the next question now to selectmen Mark Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, thank you, Lieutenant, for all your service to the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you.
It's very much appreciated and congratulations on being a finalist. It's great to see you in this mix. My question, uh, is geared more towards a subject that's been talked about, but we really haven't taken any action on it. And that is, um, police and fire dispatch. And I'm interested in, uh, your thoughts about the benefits and the challenges of merging police and fire dispatch centers.
Yeah, so there would be challenges with anything. I've been involved in some of the regional aspects. I was part of the research team when we, um, combined to make a regional SWAT team. I was a patrolman at the time. I was involved in the project. I presented to the chiefs, I found out some pluses and minuses. We evaluated what other, how other towns, other agencies had done that, which I think would be prudent. I know has been done, um, at different levels throughout this process that has been going on for a few years with these discussions. Some of the challenges, um, would be number one, uh, mixing two unions or mixing two organizations. Finding out how that's going to work together. If, if we're doing just fire and police, like Barnstable is doing with Diana's Fire, you know, modeling's a lot of stuff that after they've done it, why recreate the wheel? They've been doing a, a, a good job and from what I've heard, it's, it's been pretty successful. Finding out where that facility is going to be, where are they going to operate out of? That would, um, once that's satisfied, I think that's a, a one-time, um, challenge that we have to come over and, and, uh, get over, I should say. And, uh, once that's done, I think we move on from there. Having a chain of command is also vital and identifying what other departments have done. Who do, who do the dispatchers answer to? How does that work on a, on a daily operating basis? And how does that work on an administrative basis? Who is overall responsible? Is it the police? Is it the fire? Is it, uh, mixed? I think that those are challenges that we need to work out too. Um, and then, then policies, um, how we're going to operate in different, different arenas. I think, um, if I understand what, what Barnstable does, the, the police dispatches handle the police, the fire dispatches handle the, handle the fire, and they're, they're familiar with the policies. I'm not intimately knowledgeable about, about the way things work, but that's my, my understanding. So there are a lot of challenges, but I think there's a lot of benefits to it too. Professionalizing, uh, more so the, the dispatchers, um, giving them some feeling of, uh, of prestige and understanding that they're, they're important because they are vitally important to the operations of our, our police department. I can speak probably for the fire department too, to say that they're, they're vital for them too. So overall, it, it would be a challenge. I think overall, it's a, it's a worthwhile challenge to take on as a, as a community.
Thank you.
Can we follow up, questions on that? Yes.
From your answer, do I take it, um, that you would envision, um, both fire and police personnel staffing, um, a joint dispatch center?
The current dispatchers, is it?
No, I, I thought I heard you say something along the lines that, um, the fire would be familiar with the fire policy and police would be. So do you envision, um, having both staffing a dispatch center at the same time?
That's what I would envision, yeah. And I, I don't know if we could operate that differently unless they're cross-trange, they handle both. So the, the police dispatches and the fire dispatches would, would need to be able to help each other out. Obviously 911 is something similar that they, they would be able to, to operate. I don't know if a police dispatcher would be intimately, uh, knowledgeable of the fire process and vice versa. Would the fire dispatcher be, uh, knowledgeable of all of our, our processes and our policies? So, um, although that could be adapted over time, I think that that would be a, a challenge that we might want to meet in a different way where a police dispatcher stays with the police and a fire dispatcher stays with the fire, but they're a joint command center.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next question is for Selectmen McGurran.
Good evening, Lieutenant.
Evening.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and congratulations for making it to this level. Now, you're one of three candidates that we're going to be interviewing this evening. And so one of you will, will be selected and two of you will not. So the question goes to, if you're the candidate that's selected as police chief, how will you work with and mentor your other two candidates tonight?
So working in a department like the Yarmouth Police Department for as long as I have, with the two individuals that, um, are also applying for this position, I understand and respect them immensely. By moving forward into, to this position, it wouldn't necessarily mean that I'm better than anybody or they're worse than anybody. And I think that we would have that understanding. I have mentored and I have developed people throughout my career. That's what I've done, that's what I do. That's my, my, my personality. I wouldn't be understanding that there'd be disappointments from people not getting the position, but also understanding that there's still jobs to be done. I've really bought into the whole idea of, you know, the best leaders surround themselves with people that are smarter than them. And that's what I would plan to do. You surround your people with the best people and you'll succeed just as a result of them succeeding as well. And that would be the message that I would convey and that would be the message that I would follow through with.
Thank you.
Can we follow up?
No.
Okay. The next question is going to be asked by Selectmen Peter Smith.
Again, Lieutenant O'Malley, um, some individuals perceive that there, there is or could be a subculture in law enforcement, not necessarily in Yarmouth, but in law enforcement overall, where an adherence to a code of silence is, is, is there if there's wrongdoing by any member of the police? How would you provide transparency within our community and reassure our community that this will not occur in Yarmouth under your leadership?
So, uh, I think that the biggest thing when we're dealing with integrity is to, number one, hire the best people. And we have, and I, I can tell you that with, with certainty that the Yarmouth people, the Yarmouth officers are great people. And that's first and foremost. We have hired the best and we need to express expectations, which we do. And then we need to hold people accountable. I think with the situations that you're talking about, there's, there's organizations or agencies that have let things become acceptable. Whether you start at the bottom and they move up to the top of seriousness. Chief Fredrickson and the chiefs before him and the administrations before him, they have made it a priority to make sure that we deal with the little problems, so the little problems don't become big problems. That the little issues of integrity don't evolve into big issues of integrity. And once we've set that culture, which is the culture that we have in the Yarmouth Police Department, there's less for us to, to worry about. We need to hold our officers accountable for the things that we ask them to do, express the expectations first off, and then make sure that everyone knows that they're going to be held accountable. Thankfully, like I, I've said, we've hired great people and we don't have major issues in Yarmouth. But even the little ones, we address because we know that if we don't address the little issues, they'll become big issues in the end.
Can we follow up by any minute? Yes, Dan.
We're, we're speaking about transparency. Today I, I read an article about two police officers in a neighboring community that have been suspended, high-ranking officials, and the department refuses to give any information as to why. If you were the chief of police in Yarmouth, how would you deal with situations like that?
I don't really know what the situations are in the neighboring town or community. I think it's important for us as an organization to get out in front of things, but also know that there's people involved there too. And we have to not only be responsible for letting our community know and our community understand what's going on, that is a priority, but we also have to be concerned about the, the people that work for us as well. Like I said, I don't know what the situation is over there, um, but I, I do know that, that there's things that can be released and things that can't be released. I, I, I can't really speak on the exact situation, but I can say that in my opinion, what we need to do in law enforcement is get ahead of stories. One of the things that's been, been pushed out in a lot of the, um, PIO classes or social media classes is if we don't fill in the blanks with the actual facts of a story, people will fill them in for you. And like I said before, we've seen the consequences of that in our, in our country. We need to be able to get out in front and create bonds of trust too. So when there's certain things that we can't say, that our community will understand that and trust us to know that, well, if they could say it, they would. Let's trust them to handle this situation as professionally as we expect them to. So, and I, I think a lot of crisis management isn't necessarily, I mean, it is in the crisis, but a lot of the things in developing that bonds of trust and legitimacy that we talk about in law enforcement happens well before the crisis. We need to develop our bonds of trust well before that. If we wait till the crisis time to develop trust, it's too late. We develop trust throughout the, throughout our, our environment and throughout our, our community so that when that time comes where maybe we can't say anything, maybe it's under investigation, maybe there's, maybe there's other things happening that the public might not know about, but they'll trust us because we've have a proven track record of, of trust up until that point.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I.
Darkus.
You, um, you talked about taking care of the little things before they become the big things. Could you give us an example of a little thing and a big thing?
Well, a, a big thing is, is integrity or a big thing is, um, I mean, uh, the biggest thing is stealing, you know, violation of criminal law, uh, violating public trust. Little things might be a misuse of sick time. A, a, a little thing might be a misuse of a vacation day. Those are little things that we can deal with on a case-by-case basis that don't evolve into everything. But when we know that there's expectations or when our officers, our employees know that there's expectations and we're going to hold them accountable for those expectations, there's a whole culture that's set so that they understand that, you know, big things won't evolve out of the small things.
Thank you.
Should police officers be held to a higher standard than ordinary citizens? I mean, it, there's, there's a mentality out there that everybody deserves a second chance or you get one free kick at the cat. Should, should police be treated the same way? Or once they accept that position of social responsibility, is the standard stricter and should they know that going in?
Absolutely. Police officers, whether, they need to be held to a higher standard. There is so much trust and faith put in our law enforcement officers that we can't afford to have, um, officers operate below the, a higher standard. We've put that, uh, in the minds of officers in the academy and we've tried to hold people, our officers through that throughout their careers. I mean, even just something as, uh, First Amendment rights. I mean, there's been case law that says that if a law enforcement officer says something that's going to pro, or going to inhibit him as a law enforcement officer or disparage him, his agency, that that could be held against them. I mean, there's, there's things like that where officers need to understand that we're held to a higher standard and we should be because there's a lot of trust, there's a lot of faith that go into a, a community's faith in police. go into a community's faith in police officers.
So if you have a really good young officer, great guy, tremendous future, and he gets involved in a single-vehicle accident, let's say he hits a tree or telephone pole, something like that, and you find out that there's some of the classic symptomatology of intoxication, but it's not in the police report because the officer that responds or the sergeant that responds knows the guy has a sterling future, and this is just a small transgression in his mind, how would you deal with a situation like that?
Well, you'd have to do an investigation and not pass by. Like I said in the previous question, held to a higher standard, we, the public trusts us to enforce the laws and enforce them fairly. How can they trust us if we wouldn't enforce the laws on our own officers? There are certain things and understandings that we all have in our field, that we're not above the law, that we enforce the law fairly and we treat everybody with respect. There are certain things that are not allowable, and that's one of them. We wouldn't be overlooking something along those lines, no.
So, Lieutenant O'Malley, so the young officer, you would clamp down him real hard for what he did, assuming that it's your investigation shows that he in fact was intoxicated or had a few too many and hit a tree?
As well as the officer that was investigating and didn't put it in his report?
You hit on, you hit in the second part of my question.
Absolutely.
Well, how would you deal with that? Let's say he was this patrol sergeant that gave the young officer a break. You found out that this, you know, from other witnesses, this guy should not have been operating a motor vehicle. The police report omits some very important salient facts which point towards intoxication. How would you deal with that officer, not the young officer that was operating, but the other officer who was kind of giving the kid a break?
Well, we have a process in place to handle professional standards investigations, and we would go through that process. We would go through the interviews, we would try to gain information just as we would in any other case, and if discipline was required, we would discipline that sergeant probably just as much, if not more than the officer involved. There's no room for that in today's policing world. Back to the previous question about developing trust, we go through our careers trying to develop trust, and something like that completely diminishes all the trust that we've gained with our community, and it's just not, it's not worth it.
Okay. We have a little bit more time, so we'll go to some of the other questions. If you're appointed as police chief, I'm not going to ask you who your deputy chief would be, that would be an inappropriate question, but what I'm going to ask you is, what qualities would you look for in a deputy that you felt rounded out your skill set? And explain that for me if you would.
So, that would stock my answer, would just say somebody that rounds me out, somebody that has differing opinions, somebody that is strong and intelligent and can offer things that may be a different perspective than I don't offer. You know, I have never operated in any version of my life with yes people, I've never wanted that, even my wife and I in discussions will have, you know, contrary views of pluses and minuses and advantages.
That goes without saying. You don't have to tell us that.
So, I mean, and that's what I think you need in a command staff, and when you look further beyond just the deputy chief, Chief Fredrickson, and I feel as though Chief Carnes probably did that and the other chiefs, we are a five-man command staff where all of our opinions matter. Chief calls us into the command conference room and asks us a question and genuinely takes our input to make his decisions. That's what I think a true leader does, he doesn't surround himself with people that have like ideas that will always agree with them. We surround our people with, that are smart, that are competent, and then we listen to them and we take what they say and we evaluate it against what we believe, and that's how we succeed in as a leadership corps. And I think we have the people and the personnel to be able to do that at the Yarmouth Police Department.
So what qualities would you be looking for in this individual that complement yours and aren't duplicative?
So I think one of the things that I would want is somebody that is a little bit more tech savvy, has a little bit more of a technology background to say, you know, we should, we might be doing a service by using this or doing it this way as opposed to something that I might consider. Somebody that is more into the weeds on some of the projects. I'm a true believer in delegating different parts of a project to people that I think can bring back their ideas. I'm not always the person that dives right into a project and gets into the weeds with it, so somebody that'd be willing to do that a little bit more. But like I said, somebody that's intelligent and somebody that's not afraid to be innovative and share their ideas with me.
Any follow-up on that? Dan?
Oh, not a follow-up on that, something different.
You've got a different question? Sure.
Yeah. 2022, you become chief. Give me three initiatives that you'd like to tackle and bring to fruition.
So the first one, we've already kind of started with our mental health outreach unit. I would like to expand that into more of a community engagement unit. We've taken on community policing initiatives before, we've had programs and events, but having a full-time community engagement unit to go out and to engage with our community, whether it's our citizens that are suffering or living with mental health issues or substance abuse problems or homelessness, or our elderly population, our kids, or, you know, again, creating those relationships so people understand that we're the Yarmouth Police Department, we might be different than the Dennis Police Department or the Barnstable Police Department, whatever. That's where I think we need to move our department. Policing has changed and we need to identify the way that it's changed. I'd also like to, maybe not an initiative, but a change that I'd like to see happen is maybe an addition in command staff roles to make sure that we're, we have the personnel to accomplish everything that we need to accomplish according to post mandates as well as exceeding the minimum mandates and getting our department increasingly better as time goes. And the third one that I'd probably say is the full-time traffic unit. That has become a, and probably always has been, one of the major complaints for our community members is traffic, whether it's parking or speeding vehicles or, you know, traffic at the beaches or whatever it is, there always seems to be a traffic issue that can be addressed. We've addressed, we've used a full-time traffic officer during our summer months, but I think that it would probably be beneficial for us as a department to continue that on a yearly basis so that we have somebody that's taking ownership of the problems and taking ownership of enforcing traffic, whether it's school zones or, like I said, the other problems that have arisen over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Let me follow up on that before I go to another question. Mark, do you have another question?
Sure. You know, I've been an administrator in the past, and when I've come onto an assignment, I've had a list of things that I definitely want to do and accomplish. Obviously, you've talked about the mental health outreach and the traffic unit, I think those are very interesting initiatives. What other initiatives, what other priorities would you really want to tackle in the first, let's say, few months of the job?
I want to get us accredited. I know that the chief is probably saying, "I do too." We need to, we need to work towards that solution and we will get it done. We need a few things to fall on a place to get that done, and I think we have the personnel and the ability to do that. The other thing is, we need to increase our training. Our officers are clamoring for more training. We are struggling to expand past the minimums of our training mandates. We have a lot of them now and they keep on increasing, so increasing the training abilities of our officers, the building out back, again, in Training Center, is helping us. We're conducting active shooter training for our officers as we speak, on-shift training throughout the period before school gets back in session, but we need to expand our training capabilities too, especially for our younger officers. We know that law enforcement profession is struggling with keeping, getting and keeping high-quality people, and we don't want to lose the ones that we have. So we want to make sure that we're giving them the things that, not only that they need in the minimum mandates, but we also want to be giving them the things that they want, and giving them more advanced training is one of the things that they're asking for, and we're not capable of doing right now.
Lieutenant O'Malley, can you expand on what training you feel needs to be enhanced?
So, the first thing that we, that I would like to see us doing is do more what we call force-on-force training, which is de-escalation, which is assessing situations and moving towards appropriate solutions. We can do that, but it takes a lot of time and it takes some money because you need instructors, you need role players, you need equipment to be able to do those things, but that's something that's vital, especially in today's world. It's the closest thing we can get to real-life training without actually doing the situation. I'd like to see that, and I'd also like to see more advanced classes for our officers, there's a lot of them that want to go to, you know, advanced officer safety tactics, car stops, identifying, you know, different aspects of vehicles that may indicate drug activity and things like that. We've done a good job so far in the past few years of doing our de-escalation training and sensitivity-type training, things of that nature, but we need to continue that as well, and that's what I mean by, every year, the minimum mandates in the, become more, they become increasingly more difficult. So for us to get that advanced training that it doesn't necessarily fit the mandates, that's hard for us.
Does your training also involve live shooter training or officer trainings when they go into buildings, for example, in dangerous situations to pursue wanted criminals or home invasions in progress, things like that?
So, to answer the first question, live fire?
Live shooter, yeah.
Yeah, active shooter training is something that we've, we have done in the past, we're doing it right now. After the situation in Uvalde, we took a proactive step, we wanted to make sure that our officers were on the same page. They have had the training in prior years, but we've, I put a PowerPoint together to do a roll call to make sure that they understood and refreshed the tactics. We did an after-action review when it came out of the Uvalde shooting, and currently I had two of our active shooter instructors put together a program where our officers are going to the building out back and going over just exactly what you're talking about, officer tactics and approach tactics and movement tactics and things like that. It's, we can't really do those live fire in the facilities that we have, but the closest thing that we have is what we call simunition training, which they shoot marking cartridges, and we also make sure that we incorporate no-shoot scenarios, what we call no-shoot scenarios, where not everything is going and shoot people because we know that that's the majority of our time. The majority of our time is not the active shooter situation, the majority of our time is going and engaging somebody, giving them commands and then giving up or complying, but also preparing our officers and giving them the abilities to take the person that doesn't want to give up, that doesn't want to, that wants to hurt other people. So we're working on that training as well, and we've always done that, we've done that for a long time.
Yeah. You mentioned, you mentioned how hard it is to retain and recruit individuals to the police department, and our community is getting more and more diverse. What are your thoughts about increasing diversity on the police force in Yarmouth?
We would love to. We want the best people. We want people of diverse backgrounds, we want people of diverse ethnicities and races. We would love to. We want to increase our capabilities to engage with our community, and by increasing our diversity, I think we would be able to do such a thing. As we move forward in the future, it's hard right now, there's not a lot of applicants, there's not a lot of people that currently want to be police officers. You know, in the years past, when I was applying, 25 years ago, we would get, you know, hundreds of people applying for a couple of positions, and now we're struggling to find 800 to get to a couple of positions. So we need to do a better job of attracting people, and I think that's in recruitment. I think a lot of it has to do with the understanding of what we actually do in contemporary policing. You know, the watching a TV show or watching a movie and seeing what those officers do compared to what we actually do is completely different, and a lot of people don't agree with the reality. They get here and they go, "Wait a minute, this isn't what I expected." So I think that's a part of it too, understanding that we do a lot more of counseling and responding to family disputes or responding to people in crisis than we do kicking in doors and going after people that are armed.
Any others? Yes, Dan.
Why are you uniquely qualified to be our next chief?
I think...
You don't have to answer that.
I think there are two things that set me apart. One is my perspective. I have developed a leadership perspective throughout my career. I didn't realize when I was coaching, I didn't realize when I was teaching, I didn't realize at that time that I was developing my leadership capabilities. But now as I look back and over the past few years that I've looked back, I've developed those capabilities for a long, my entire adult life. The cornerstone of leadership is not doing something, it's leading other peoples, people to do something, and developing them to go beyond where you've, where you are. If I have a program, I've developed this program, I want to bring somebody up behind me, bring them to the program level that I've created and have them go beyond me. That's the perspective that I have, and that's what I think the perspective of leadership needs to have to develop an organization moving forward. The other perspective, the other thing that sets me apart, and I don't know if it sets me apart as much as it just makes me who I am, and it sounds kind of corny, but I care. I care about the job I do, I care about the job that the officers do, and I care about them as individuals, I care about their families, I care about the services that they provide our community, that is what sets me apart. I know there's plenty of other people that do care, but I can put that into words to show you how I care. My officers would say the same thing to you, the people that I've taught in the academies over the years, the people that I teach or that I've taught in my department, they would tell you the same thing. The people that come into my office to seek counseling or to seek guidance, they will tell you that I care, and that's what sets me apart, and that's what will make me a great leader.
That's great. So I'm going to stop there, only because of time constraints. We've had a great dialogue, I've enjoyed it, you've had some very enlightening responses, which we appreciate. So what I'm going to do now is just give you a few minutes to use as you wish. You can use it to draw to our attention things that you don't think you were questioned about, but you think are important. Personal characteristics you want to talk about that you don't feel we covered, or you can use it just to sum up your overall message.
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say thank you again to the board, to Town Administrator, to Chief Fredrickson for giving us, me, the opportunity to interview for police chief position. I know that it's a monumental task, but I'm prepared for it. I've prepared myself to take on more extensive leadership roles throughout my experiences at work, and also my professional, I mean, excuse me, my personal life, as a father, as a teacher, as a coach, and as a mentor. I have used every opportunity, whether I realized it at the time or not, to prepare myself to be the best leader that I can be. I've constantly self-evaluating and implementing lessons learned to be the best version of myself that I can be, and I support others to do the same. We owe it to our communities, our profession, and to each other to continue to evolve as officers and continue to bring the Yarmouth Police Department into the future. Our community's expectations are higher than they've ever been. We must continue to evolve through training, education, and our experiences to meet those expectations. We are all very fortunate to have the great people at the Yarmouth Police Department that we have. I've considered it an honor to work with all of them. I've considered it an honor to work with all of them throughout my career. And it would be a privilege to serve the Yarmouth community, as well as the men and women that work at the Yarmouth Police Department as their police chief. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just think, you know, while we're waiting for the next candidate, it's hard to know how much time you're going to spend on scripted questions because some of the answers are short, some of them are lengthy, some there's follow-up, some there isn't. So I'm not sure that we can stick to asking identical questions, only because some of the board members kind of winged it in response to, I shouldn't say winged it, but created their own questions in response to the feedback they got from the officers. So I don't think we're going to have one-on-one identical questions. The main questions, yes, they'll be the same. But do you have any suggestions on that?
So, Mr. Chairman, the way the board did it was fine, as long as you use the foundation of the same questions. So you're asking questions in response to the answers they give? That's not a problem. Each person will ask, may answer differently, which I expect, and you'll do a different follow-up. That's not an issue at all. As long as you've used, try to use those, the basic concepts of those questions, so each candidate gets the same question, to be fair, all the way around.
I think our core questions will be the same.
We're good.
But again, a lot of it depends on the time that the candidate takes or the board members take. You look up there, you're only, you know, you're in there for 35 minutes, 38 minutes, and you've gone through the first round of questions. It's really not enough time to give the candidates. So we had to kind of go on. I was trying to get them to about the one-hour mark.
So you did very well. If you look at the questions, your questions you have, and then you even went down to the additional questions, all of you asked those. If you could use those same questions, try to get them all in. Naturally, it's going to be the timeframes, but if you could all each ask those same questions-
So I'm going to ask the board members, because I can't recall each, but if you can kind of stick to those additional questions, more or less, that you asked the prior candidate, that would be good.
Mr. Chairman, it's not uncommon to ask a question based on their answers. That's very common. You'll ask different questions based on different answers. We expect different responses. So that's not uncommon. That's fine.
And the interest of the board, too. I mean, for example, police training is an issue that is, to me, is very interesting because it's, I think as Peter, you know, prompted the lieutenant to get into more detail, there are very, very many different aspects to police training. And if we had more time, I was going to ask him as to what he felt the importance was or the priority was of different kinds of training. Because training is everything in police work, I think, but that's just my opinion.
Are you ready for your second candidate?
We are.
You have a few minutes?
We're ready for Lieutenant Bryant. I'll go into the same order, too, in the first round of the questions. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
For the sake of the public, the second candidate we'll be interviewing presently is Lieutenant Mike Bryant from the Yarmouth Police Department, and he is also applying for the position of Yarmouth Police Chief. I'm going to go over just a few basics with you about the format that I went over with Lieutenant O'Malley at the outset. What I'll do to start off momentarily is I'll give you, I'm not going to call it an opening statement because that's, that sounds too much like court stuff, but it, kind of an introductory few minutes to tell us about your education, training, experience, and why you're applying for this position, what you feel you bring to the table, so to speak, just an overview. Then we'll have individual questions. We'll be rotating among members of the board. If a particular board member has a follow-up question, for example, if I ask you a question and Selectman Horgan has something relating to the same topic that he wants to ask in furtherance of that, developing that issue, he'll be able to do that. And then when we're done with the follow-up questions, the next questioner will ask you a question. At the end of all of this, you'll have some free time at the end to use however you deem appropriate. You can talk to us then about things that you feel were not brought up in the questioning that you think are important that we know. You might use it to summarize, like a closing statement, so to speak, any way you want. So you have any questions so far?
No, that sounds great.
Okay. So why don't you tell us a little bit about who Lieutenant Mike Bryant is, what your education, training experience is, and why you are applying to become the next police chief in Yarmouth?
Wonderful, thank you. So as you saw from my resume and my application, I'm Lieutenant Mike Bryant. I would start with, I live here in the town of Yarmouth. I've been here for 30 years. I raised my daughter Samantha here with my wife Paula. I have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and then after I was hired here, I went back to school and got my master's degree in criminal justice. So currently, I have a master's degree, which I got back in 1998. As a Yarmouth police officer, I was lucky enough to start as a summer reserve, which we don't have anymore. It was a great learning experience for me, being a summer cop. It really ingrained in me what community policing is and how that works. Walking the beaches of Yarmouth in the early 90s was an eye-opening experience for a college graduate. I've been a patrol officer. I was a computer tech officer. I was fortunate enough to be promoted to sergeant. At that timeframe, I was also selected to be on our regional SWAT team on the Cape. My time on the regional SWAT team, I rose through the ranks and became the commanding officer of the SWAT team. When I got promoted to lieutenant, I resigned from the SWAT team, trying to manage that, and then running as a police lieutenant, I thought was too much. So it was a great experience running the SWAT team on Cape Cod, but that time ended when I was a lieutenant. I did patrol for two years as a patrol lieutenant, doing all three shifts, managing the eight sergeants. And then 10 years ago, I was made administrative or detective lieutenant. So in that role, I run our detective division, court records, evidence. I do major functions in town, like the seaside festival and the Irish parade. I have to manage those scenes. So I do a lot of different things, as we like to say in policing. I wear a lot of different hats, but fortunately, I'm very comfortable. And each job that I have allows me to showcase different skills and attributes that I have. So I'm very fortunate to have the job that I have, and Yarmouth has been a great community to me.
So why chief?
I think it's just a natural progression. Quite frankly, I never thought, as a summer cop, that I would ever be blessed enough to sit in front of you to interview as the chief of police. But rising through the ranks, both formally and informally, being selected, whether it be a patrol sergeant, lieutenant, or quite frankly, the union president, which you're selected by your peers, I learned early on, I have a lot of qualities like my dad. He was a natural leader, and I found out that I was the same. And I keep thriving for more. Being the chief of police would just be that next step of thriving for more. I really like the pressure of the job. Sometimes it can be odd, but being able to make a quick decision and stand by that decision and being a true leader for the men and women that work for me is just an awesome ability that I have. And doing the chief of police job would be that next step for me.
Okay, thank you. I failed to at the outset, and I should have offered our congratulations to you for being a finalist. You were vetted, so the public knows this, by our consultant, our experts, and found to be highly qualified for the position. You're also advanced by the recommendation of our town administrator, our chief administrative officer in town. So we want to, we want to welcome you and with the, with you knowing that, we understand that you have been screened in as a very worthy candidate for this position.
Appreciate that.
So having said that, let me ask you this first question. As the police chief in Yarmouth, what are some of the ways you would work to develop a good relationship between the citizens of the town and the police department? And why do you think that relationship between the citizens and the police is important?
So I'll start with the importance first. I think the importance, if we go back in history, started probably with President Obama, with the six pillars of policing. You know, like government, like you folks, law enforcement is at the forefront of that. We wear police uniforms, we have to respond to calls, we have to sometimes intervene when people don't want us to intervene. We are challenged with an awesome authority to take somebody's freedom away, or sometimes worse, we have to take someone's life. So to have those powers and those abilities that are placed upon us, if we are not part of the community, and if we are not showcasing what we're doing and receiving input, if we don't have that openness, I think we're going to fail before we even try to start. Working within communities, whether we're wanted there or not, not taking their input and ability is a responsibility that has all of us. So some of the things I think I would do is to continue on the path that we're on. I think the chief and several prior have started a good groundwork for that path. Social media is obviously a huge key for us, but social media only touches a small aspect of the community. Not everybody has Facebook or Twitter. So getting out into the community is key. I think the biggest thing internally is to foster that from the officers, the men and women that work in the department, to tap into their resources. We all have great skills, whether it's telling a poem, but some of the officers have different skills than the command staff might have. And to tap into those skills and to get those officers out there, I think is paramount. So the first thing would be to find what drives the officers, the men and women that work there, because they all have their own special talents. Some of them do shop with a cop. The administration doesn't do that. The officers internally found that they had a passion for that. So all the great things that we're doing, there's obviously room for improvement and more items need to be done. I think tapping into those resources, which is the men and women of the police department, is probably the first thing that I would do, see what drives them.
Does anybody have a follow-up question? I do. So how important is that to you? Suppose, suppose you just don't do that community outreach. How, does the department suffer in some measure? Why is, why is that relationship between the police and the citizen so important? I believe it is, but I want to know why you think it is.
So I think the number one reason I would give you would be my summer of 1991 when I was a summer cop.
Okay, tell me about that.
I didn't know what community policing was. I just knew I was tasked to work at a beach, South Middle Beach, and take care of that zone. At the end of the summer, the residents and the guests there formed a petition. They signed a petition, gave it to the chief that I should be a police officer. So in talking to them, because they presented to me before summer ended, I learned it was because I was open. I talked to them, I talked to the children. I was willing to be open about the job. If they had police questions, I would answer them. I would tell them if I didn't have it, I would get the answer. So it was ingrained in me from the beginning, being a part of the community, which is why I still live in Yarmouth, is the key to success. So it would be foreign to me to say, well, no, we don't need to do that, because that's how I started policing, and I know it works.
Okay. We will go to the next questioner. Who will be Selectman Horgan?
Good evening, Lieutenant.
Nice to see you.
There's been some talk amongst the administration, certainly with the select board, in terms of a desire to pursue state accreditation. Do you feel that's worthwhile? Why do you feel it would be worthwhile? And how would you get us there?
So it's a great question, and one that we had talked about at our last interview. I think it's of the utmost importance. It's not so much to get the checkbox checked that we're an accredited agency, but I think accreditation keeps us open and honest about what we're doing internally. Rules, regulations, policies, best practices, those standards all come from being an accredited agency. I think that the police department has tried numerous times to get to that level. I think that we're very close. I think the key is to have a team right now. We're kind of putting a lot of the weight on one individual, and we've done that in the past. I think we need to have a team approach to achieve that goal of state accreditation, to keep us open and honest, and make sure that we're maintaining best practices. It's nice to sit back and think, we're checking off all these boxes, we're good to go. But making sure you're doing that by a process which is more formal like that, I think we have to do that. We owe it to the town.
Any follow-up on that?
Well, you said that you need a team to do that. What exactly are you talking about?
So to become accredited, there's a long process that you have to go through, maintaining standards on every policy, every procedure-
Do you bring that microphone a little closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Every rule, I think if I tilt it up on my work. So to go through every single thing that a department does, to task that on one individual, I think is a lot. Right now, every individual, and it's one of the lieutenants, we all have, like I said to you in my opening, multiple duties that we do, multiple hats that we wear. To give one person accreditation along with all of the other jobs that they do, our history has shown it hasn't worked, because there just isn't enough time for one person to dedicate to accreditation, as well as all of the other duties that they have, whether it be patrol, cruisers, swats, managing dispatch. There's a lot of stuff that happens, and for one person to do that, we've tried and it hasn't worked. That's why I think you have to have a team approach, whether it be all three lieutenants or, which I would prefer, you bring in patrol and a sergeant, and you get a mix of the department working together as a group, I think it would be much more successful.
Thank you.
So I understand you would perhaps, I know you haven't given us a definitive answer on it, but you would perhaps involve maybe three lieutenants and perhaps some sergeants?
So all three lieutenants?
Kind of form a group?
Yeah, so, because all three lieutenants currently have different duties and responsibilities. So when it comes to managing the accreditation process, if we all maintained our own duties and that portion, you would only need one person to basically lead it, and then everybody else comes in. We have a detective sergeant who just runs detectives. He should be a part of that process. So when it comes to policies and procedures and best practices for a detective division, who's better qualified? The detective sergeant who's doing it every day or somebody else? So I think you have to tap into those different resources that we have, because, quite frankly, they could be more knowledgeable than the person who's in charge of the process.
Okay. So the next question, then we'll go to Selectman Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for your service to the town, and I want to congratulate you on being a finalist. It's great to see you in the mix. As you know, there's been discussion over the years about dispatch, police dispatch, fire dispatch, combining them. I'm interested in your thoughts, and I think everybody on the board is interested in your thoughts about the benefits and the challenges of merging both dispatches.
It's a great question. And a few years back, when we had the committee, I was a member of that committee, trying to achieve that goal. My thoughts then are the same as they are today. Again, I think it would be a disservice to the town of Yarmouth if we didn't have joint dispatch. Just when you break down what a 911 call can do, and to have to put somebody on hold because you have the wrong person or the wrong agency, when we have a system in place today that you don't need to do that, I think is a disservice to the town. Having joint police-fire dispatch, putting the people in the same room to get the services out that need to be out, to get people the help that they're requesting, I think is, quite frankly, can be a very simple process. Now politically, I think sometimes that's where things get muddied, is who's giving up power? Where does dispatch go? Does it go police? Does it go into the fire building? Does it go into another town or a separate building? I think those are questions that can easily be answered, but sometimes that's where the process is stuck. So to have a joint police-fire dispatch, to have the services in one room for the resident or the guest that's calling for help, I think it's something that we absolutely should be moving forward with. Do I think it'll save us money? I don't know, probably not. But to me, public safety isn't about money, it's about the quality of services that we're giving our residents and guests. And joint dispatch, I think, is, quite frankly, a no-brainer.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that. You talked about the politics of the situation. And it's been said that when you have more than one person in the room, you have a political situation, and I think there's some truth to that. So how would you go about resolving the political situation as to who has the authority for whatever, what is the- who has the authority for whatever? What is the chain of command? Where is the location going to be? Who has the supervisory authority? We can't just wait for it to resolve itself like a tide coming in. What would be the approach to attacking those problems?
It's a great question. So I think it doesn't really matter what building it's in, whether it was in police, fire, or a separate building. The key to the success of that is going to be communication. So you have to have a representative from both police, I'm not sure if I lost my microphone, a representative from both police and fire have to be hands-on, quite frankly, daily, whether that's a commanding officer or a sergeant. Each shift should be checking with dispatch. Dispatch should be run and managed by a civilian. That way, they're not part of police and they're not part of a fire. Their sole job is to supervise and manage the dispatch center. So once you take it out of the hands of the police chief and the fire chief, you put it as a true joint dispatch center, a civilian is managing dispatch. You don't have to be a police officer to do that, but you have to be a manager. Police and fire just have to have their representatives, and it's phone calls and daily check-ins, because we each are going to have our own services that we want. You can't rely on somebody else to do that if you don't communicate with them. So I would revamp the whole system. I would put a civilian in charge of dispatch. That's their profession. That's their job. And police and fire just have daily communication and interactions with them.
Do you think by having that civilian in control will take a lot of the politics out of it?
No, there'll always be politics in life. I think we'd be kidding ourselves if there weren't. But at the very least, it wouldn't be pitting a police chief against a fire chief, or a fire chief against a police chief, who has more muscles and who gets to rule. It's you have that third calling the department head. The department head is going to take all the information and make the best decision that they think for dispatch, because it would be separate from police and fire.
Anybody else on that? No? All right, so the next question will go to Selectman Dorcas McGuire.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. By nature of your being here, you're one of the three finalists for this position. Congratulations. But that leaves one of you getting the position and two of you not getting the position. So here's the question. If you're selected as police chief, how will you work with your other interviewees and mentor them going forward?
It's a great question. It can be an interesting one. Certainly, myself and one of the other candidates, we started together. So our careers have been pseudo-mirror images, because we've been on the force the same amount of time. In the 30 years that certainly me and Deputy Chief Lynn have worked together, we've had a great working relationship. We've been, he's been my boss, he's been my peer for 30 years. So I don't see any problems working as Kevin's boss or his leader as the chief of police. With Lieutenant O'Malley, it would be the exact opposite. I mean, the exact same thing. We started as peers, and then as we both rose through the ranks, we were peers and coworkers. One thing I've learned going back now, oh, 15 years, when I, as a supervisor, the team concept is key. I said in one of my other answers, tapping into the resources of those that may have more knowledge and abilities or smarter than you, I think is a successful person. I'm not the smartest person in the room. I don't ever want to be, because I think once you think you are, you set yourself up for failure. So knowing that, you know, the other two candidates, as well as the other lieutenants, they have great knowledge, great abilities and great skills, making sure you maintain that relationship and tapping into them. I think it's one of the things I try to do as a leader now. I try to empower the employees that work for me. As the chief of police, working with the two candidates, going through the process, I have all the faith in the world that that will continue. We're a great team now, and that team concept, I don't think would ever change based on, you know, the board's decision. I said, I'm so humbled to even be here in front of you. But yeah, that decision, for me to be the chief of police, working side by side with Drew and Kevin, I don't think that will change at all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You talked about hiring people that are smarter than you, or bring something to the table that you don't have. That's a great answer, and I expect that I'll hear that a lot tonight from the various candidates. But how do you do that and hire somebody that you feel may have, and at least in some respect, superior skills to you, and yet you're making decisions that they might not necessarily agree with? How do you handle that?
Well, I think as a leader, certainly what I try to do now is it's more of an open concept. The only time I really push my authority forward is on a critical incident, when I have to. You know, the officers that work for me, the supervisors that work for me, they expect me to be able to make a decision, and their job is to follow those decisions. But those are under critical incidents. When we're talking about planning, we'll take joint dispatch. Bringing individuals in and getting their opinion, and tapping into the resources that they have and their knowledge and their skills, I think every leader should be doing that. I don't have to make a decision, and I can rely on those that may have more knowledge than I am. An example would be a K-9 officer. I've never been a K-9 handler. So for me to tell a K-9 officer, you need to do A, B, and C, well, it'd be a disservice to me and the handler, because I don't know his job. But to be his supervisor, I don't need to know his job. I need to have a good working relationship with him, build up that trust, so I know that I can count on his answers as being correct. So I think the same would go through.
What kind, just in the example you used, and that's a great example. You never did K-9, so what do you know about K-9 officers? But you're still going to have to manage at some level that officer, right?
Oh, yes.
You're going to have to give him some guidance, some direction. So what do you look to for that, given that you have never had that experience?
So on a critical incident where a K-9 officer would be called to a scene, the K-9 handler, at the end of the day, decides how he uses his dog. The commanding officer, which would be me, would call the dog in. This is what we're looking for, for the dog. The handler would have the last say if the dog has the ability to do what I want it to do or not. So it would be a disservice to the handler or me if I was to give him an order to do something that he's telling me the dog can't do. I don't know the dog's abilities. He does.
So you're distinguishing between making the decision and implementing the decision?
Correct.
Right? Okay. So the next question is going to come from Selectman Peter Smith.
Lieutenant Ryan, congratulations for being here.
Thank you.
Some individuals perceive that there is or may be a subculture in law enforcement where there is adherence to a code of silence. When there is something wrong, when there is some wrongdoing on the part of police, how would you provide transparency within our community and reassure them, the community, that this will not occur, excuse me, in Yarmouth under your leadership?
Another great question. I'm not sure who wrote your questions for you. Being on the other side of the board, I love the questions that you're asking. It can be a difficult task, being transparent, showing transparency. Doing many of the internal affairs investigations that I've had to do, quite frankly, sometimes it ends up being a he said, she said. So to show and be transparent can be difficult. We're fortunate that we're moving forward with our body cameras and our cruiser cameras. Just those items, although they're not the end-all, be-all, is really going to push us forward a lot to show, this is what we're doing. This is what the men and women of your Yarmouth Police Department are out there doing every day. All the interactions will be video recorded. Having that open to the public, through public records, makes it even more transparent. So maintaining and making sure that every officer is wearing a body camera, that we have the cruiser cameras, they're open to the public. We currently have an open-door policy to the town. I said, that should not, that should not end. The last four chiefs that I've worked for all had that same policy, where they were always open and available to me with any member of the public to show that transparency, I think is key. The public has a right to know what we're doing. Quite frankly, we're servants of the community. But we're here to serve them. In order to do that properly, we have to be open and transparent.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Just following up on that. I was mentioning that today I read an article about a neighboring town who has two high-ranking police officers on suspension, and they haven't provided any information at all as to why. How would you deal with something like that, a situation like that, in terms of trying to provide transparency to the citizens?
So it'd be difficult for me, because I'm familiar with both, so I'm going to try to answer that and stay as neutral as I can.
Answer it politically.
Yes, see, politics never ends. That's the problem. I think the issue would start with internally. How are you handling and managing those investigations? So when we have an internal investigation and Yarmouth has them, we have a policy and a rule, a best practice on a timeline on how those investigations should be done. It would be very difficult for me to sit in front of you and tell you that an investigation takes a year. Certainly not at this level. So some of those investigations that you're talking about, I don't understand as a professional police officer, how they've taken that long. When we manage our investigations, if we go a month, maybe two, that would be the outsourced of how long it would take to manage the investigation. So it's difficult for me to comment what's happening in another town on an investigation that's gone on for over a year. Quite frankly, that does not happen in Yarmouth. We don't do that. We have a policy, a procedure, a practice. When we run internal affairs investigations, we report to the town administrator. We keep him abreast as to what's going on. So it should never get to the level where we're reading about in the newspaper that was X amount of open investigations that have been open for months or, quite frankly, over a year. It should not happen. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Just in general terms, there's some thinking, especially when you're talking about young people, that everybody's entitled to a mistake. Or putting it another way, you should get one free kick at the cat anyway. When it comes to police officers' conduct, especially young police officers, does that same mentality, that same kind of understanding apply, or are police supposed to be, or are they held to a higher standard than civilians?
Oh, I think as professional police officers, we have to be held to a higher standard, without a doubt.
Why?
Now, because we're entrusted with taking away somebody's freedom, somebody's life. We're entrusted to go into people's homes, into businesses when they're open or when they're closed. So the authority that a police officer has, and the ability that they have to go in and around the community, and around buildings and homes, is second to none. So we have to be held to that higher standard. Just like when it comes to freedom of speech, a police officer can't just say anything that they want to say. We have to be held to that higher standard. We have to be neutral. So for officers to not be held to that higher standard is a mistake. Now, we're also people and we're human beings. So you have to take every case on a case-by-case basis. You have to look, was it a mistake of the head? Was it a mistake of the heart? How big of a mistake was it? And that's why even internally, we have a disciplinary process. People can get a verbal warning, a written warning, a suspension, and then ultimately a termination. Beyond that would be criminal charges, and you'll see in police departments all across the country, that's the process that is followed. You know, the officers, the men and women, they're our best attribute. We put a lot of time, money, and energy into recruiting, hiring, training, and then maintaining them. So do you want to be a chief of police or a town that, on every little mistake, simply does away with an employee? No, they're our best asset. But you also have to hold that standard, and you have to keep them true and honest. And running an investigation for, and I'll use it as a blanket for a year, is a disservice to the other men and women within the agency. They don't want that hanging over their heads. I'm sure the town that you're talking about, the rank and file, the men and women, don't want that investigation being in the paper, what's taken so long? Because everybody wants to move forward, and I'm confident that most of the individuals want action taken. We all have to be held accountable. And when that doesn't happen, I think it sets a bad tone, and I think that's where you can see morale foster, because you didn't take action.
If you were the chief, and you were aware of a situation where you had a young officer, say, a very promising young man or woman with a very bright future, and they were involved in a single motor vehicle accident, hit a tree, hit a telephone pole, something like that, and they were pretty much cleared, and you found out after the fact that the person that responded, let's say, a patrol sergeant, kind of hit a lot of the salient facts of the case that pointed toward intoxication, how would you handle that situation? As to the officer, it adds to the supervisor?
Well, absolutely, because it's both. I think it's difficult to say poised to. I think we all know the difference between a lie and a truth. If I find that an officer has lied and is lying, I don't think there's any room for that. That employee needs to be terminated. You can't have a police officer that's lying, whether it's to the public or to his supervisors or the chief of police.
So if that officer told you, I wasn't drinking that night, and you found out he was lying about that, you would terminate him?
You cannot have an employee lying to you. How do I take that same employee, have him testify in court, and stand before a judge and a jury, and say, I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, but they've already lied to the chief of police? You cannot have that.
Okay, how about the supervisor? How would you deal with that?
Well, I think it'd be on the same level. If that supervisor knew that this is what happened and they lied about that.
Well, this guy didn't lie. He just didn't put the stuff in the report.
So we would call that a lie. I'm denying that it's a lie.
So withholding essential information, you would equate with lying?
I would equate that with lying. As police officers, we're mandated to report.
So what would you have in store for that sergeant?
I think the exact same thing. If that sergeant reported that that didn't happen, and that something else happened, and in fact, we showed that the person was drinking, they were driving, and they crashed, and the sergeant knew that, they have to be terminated.
Okay. Just kind of gauging my time here. I have another question to start again. I'm not going to ask you who you would hire as a deputy police chief if you're appointed chief, because I don't think that would be a fair question. But I'm going to ask you what qualities you would look for in a deputy chief that you felt might complement your skill set? And explain why you would be looking for those particular qualities in that other individual, and how that would help you perform your job.
I think it's a great question, and it taps into kind of what I was saying before. We're blessed, the town of Yarmouth, the police department, that we have a command staff of five. We're, we have five different personalities, five different strengths and weaknesses. We're certainly not a cookie cutter police department. Some of my, I'll call it a weakness, would be budgeting. I haven't had a good opportunity as a lieutenant to do a lot with budgeting. I do, on the side, I'll do budgeting for the firearms unit, for the fleet. But the overall budget, that would be something that I would have to learn. So as a deputy chief, I would be looking for somebody who had that as a strength. Because if that's my weakness, I need to complement that. And it would go hand in hand with anything. And I said, well, like I said, luckily, you have a great police department. You have a great command staff.
And I'll make the question a little bit easier. The skills wouldn't necessarily have to complement yours. I mean, the budgeting is a great example that you gave, something that you feel you could use some help in, so you'd hire somebody with that experience. But aside from, maybe my question is too narrow, aside from complimenting your skills, what would you be looking for in that person? What qualities would you be looking for in that deputy chief?
I think they have to be a social person. You have to be open. You have to be able to communicate. I think the best part of communicating is listening. So somebody I would want in that position is someone who's a great listener, because you can't communicate something out if you're not receiving what's coming in. Just like you folks today, you can't make the wrong decision tonight. I'm truly honest with you that you have three great candidates, and I know that pats myself on the back a little bit. But you are truly blessed. We have a great police department. Just like you, I wouldn't be able to make the wrong decision. The other command staff that's there, they're great individuals. They're smart. They're knowledgeable. I know that they're good listeners and they're good communicators, because I work with them every day. So I don't think I could make the wrong decision, just like you folks cannot make the wrong decision tonight.
So budgeting, a social person that communicates well, and the foundation of communication is listening? You see, I'm listening.
Yes, you are.
Right? So what else?
And a true leader, because we already are true leaders. We're professionals in what we do.
And what kinds of things would you be looking at in that candidate's background to show you that they have leadership capability?
I think it's the history of what they've done, what they've done in the agency. So as you look at our resumes, they're not all the same. We've all done different things. We've all gone off into different directions. We've had different trainings. If you look at someone's blanket recommend resume, now I have the ability to not really look at it as much because I work with them, but you don't want someone that is the same as you. And I think the other important thing is you want someone who you think is going to be your next chief of police. Because it's a building block for that. Generally, that's what we do. We try to promote up through the agency. So you want to find your next chief of police through the deputy chief's position.
So you would in part be looking to mentor somebody else for the future?
Correct.
Okay. Mark, do you have another question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm interested in specifically some of your priorities and initiatives that you would want to really pursue as the next police chief.
Well, I think we touched on some of them today. I think foremost is accreditation. I think it's going to keep the department on task. Continuing and maintaining what we're doing for community policing, but then building upon that. Maintaining our level of transparency and enhancing it through body cameras and cruiser cameras. We have a strong public records law that's in place that A, we're mandated to follow, but unfortunately, I know there are agencies all across America that don't. The Yarmouth Police Department follows that to the letter. So maintaining that transparency for the town. As a new chief of police, I mean, one of my goals obviously would be, as much as you think, because you've lived in a town for 30 years, you know every aspect of it. But as the chief of police, you have to be able to get out into the public, connect with different organizations within the town, whether they're town organizations or private, whether it's the schools, churches, just be able to be open and transparent and meet with the public and find out what their needs are. The chief of police shouldn't be someone who sits at the desk. He does his eight hours at work. He needs to be the public figure out and about in the town of Yarmouth. And I've seen numerous chiefs in Yarmouth do just that. And I think that helps drive the Yarmouth Police's success, is you have to be out in the public as the chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow.
Sure.
There are some people, there are groups in the community that feel that they're sort of either isolated, or they're sort of not visible or not even seen. I'm talking particularly about some of the minority groups, some of, we have new immigrants that are coming into the community. The demographics of Yarmouth, it's all changing. And so how in a climate like this do we reach out to groups where you have concentrations of people of color or elderly groups that are important in this community? So in terms of the outreach, how do you how do you get to some of those folks that feel somewhat isolated, not really a priority in the community?
Well, certainly you're correct. And I look at that isolation as in two phases. We have approximately 30,000 year-round residents, and there's groups there. This time of year, when we're 75-plus thousand, we have a whole new set of people that come in, whether it's guests, visitors, J-1 visas. We have employees who work in the town of Yarmouth. They come here year after year, but don't live in this country, because they come here just for that short term. The Jamaican population, the Brazilian population have exploded. A lot of those you won't find on a census, because they don't do the census. Us trying to stay connected with those groups is a difficult challenge. Some of them don't want police interaction. Some of them, because of where they grew up and where they still live, police are bad. So when police show up, they're in shutdown, or they want nothing to do with us. So try to bridge that gap is difficult. We do have one Jamaican officer, even for him to bridge that gap is difficult, because they see him now as a police officer, not a fellow Jamaican. So it can be very difficult and very challenging. I think the key to that is you can't give up. You have to keep trying. And that was where I said at the beginning, tapping into the officers, the men and women that work there, what are their strengths? Using those strengths, using their background to our advantage is the key. But connecting with every individual group in the town is a very difficult task, but one that you can't give up on.
Thank you.
Along Mark's lines, if you're appointed chief, would you try to recruit some representatives of these other groups, for examples, a Spanish-speaking officer or a Brazilian officer, or officers who represent these different emerging constituencies?
I think it's part of today's policing. One of my side jobs at the department is I'm a recruitment officer. I have a good reputation on one end. Some of the chiefs, maybe not so good, because I'm really good at finding officers from other towns, and I call them pilfering them and bringing them over.
That's good, because we get some pilfer too.
Yes, we do.
I'm glad to know we do a little pilfering of our own.
Well, we do a lot of give backs as well. But finding the diversity in different individuals, whether it's the LGBT community, whether it's race, whether it's religion, sex, I think to maintain that diversity is key. It's easier to do that one-on-one, which is why I try to reach out, whether it's the individuals I know, I go to the police academy graduations. We try to keep an eye on who's there, what departments are they working for. It's harder for smaller PDs than Yarmouth to maintain people. But it's better for the town of Yarmouth, and quite frankly, that's my goal, is to improve Yarmouth and the Yarmouth Police Department. So when I see individuals who I think would be a good fit, it's just a matter of reaching out to them, finding who their friends and family are, reaching out to them, maintaining that constant contact and communication. Quite frankly, to try to get them to come to Yarmouth. It makes us better.
Okay, great. Do you have a question there?
Sure. You're a made police chief. What about you? Is, how are you uniquely qualified to lead this department at this time? And I want to add to that, you've been in this seat before. You went through this process once before. What's changed since then? What have you added that makes you who you are today? And what can we expect?
You sound a little bit like me when I talk to my 25-year-old daughter. So the question is, what's made me today? Well, Mike Bryant that was here 12 years ago interviewing for the chief of police. I'm 12 years older. I have more maturity. I've grown. I've developed. And quite frankly, I've changed. Every five years is what I tell my daughter. We change as people and as individuals, because all of our life experience is now brought in, and we move forward from that. You change when you get a job as a policeman. Your personality has to change. When you get promoted to sergeant, you change, because you have more authority, more responsibility. You change as you go older, and you change as your position changes. So for me, the last 12 years, so many things have changed. I've dealt with travesties in town, travesties within the police department as a leader, and I've had to deal with those, and I've had to help mentor and guide the officers that work with me to get through those. Those grow you up. Those make you stronger and who you are today. I've had the same personal challenges in life, dealing with loss. They change you, and they, I think, make you firmer and stronger and a better person, depending on how you deal with those. I'm confident that I deal with those changes very well. I like to say I have different hats. I said before, in some circles, I'm Lieutenant Bryant, and in other circles, I'm Mikey B. Because I have to have those differences. And maintaining the change in life and the professionalism, but staying humble, and that's what Mikey B is versus Lieutenant Bryant, I think is key. You have to be a real person, because I'm dealing with people every day, whether it's internally, as the chief of police would do, or externally, dealing with somebody who's in crisis. You have to be able to maintain that. So 12 years ago versus today, I've changed many, many times.
And why today are you the best candidate?
And don't be humble with this answer. This is the time you do not want to bring out humility.
Well, as you know, Mrs. Stone, I've told you many times, I try not to think of it as about me. Because in my 30 years, I've always put the town of Yarmouth and my family first, not me. I think today, why is it about me? I think I've worked very hard. I think I've honed my skills. I think I've prepared myself. I think I have what some refer to as the knowledge, the skills and abilities to be an excellent police chief. Did I have that 12 years ago? I would have said then, probably yes, but looking back now, Lieutenant Bryant 12 years ago, he was still learning the job. And there isn't one job in the department that I haven't managed or done myself. I know what every job is. I know the policies, the rules, the procedures. I would kid you if I said I know what it's like to be a chief of police, because the only one that knows that is someone who's been the job, who's been a chief of police. But I certainly know I have the confidence, the skills and the abilities to do that job.
Okay, thank you.
Along his question, because I think it's a good one. Can you give us a little bit more on a visual level, a practical level, why you feel you're ready at this point in time to make this move? I understand what leadership means. I understand what experience means. I understand what moving through the ranks and staying humble means. But in concrete terms, what do you think you can bring to the department? I believe you have more to say about that than you're telling us. I just think the question, the probing's got to be a little bit deeper. So as a person, as a leader, as somebody with the experiences that you have, why you now?
So I think Lieutenant Mike Bryant now has been ready to be the chief of police for several years. In going through the ranks and working through the job, working with other chiefs of police and other deputies and lieutenants in other agencies, you see from that thousand viewpoint, what needs to be done. I think I'm doing that today. I think there's many times that I can act as a chief, even though I'm not in the jobs that I do. I've had several chiefs who worked for, I've worked for, I don't get those interactions with them. You need to do this, or you need to do that. My job is to serve the town and serve the police department. And in taking that role as seriously as I do, I don't have calls where the chief of police is saying, why did you do this, or why didn't you do that? I know what the job is. I do the job every day, and I've been doing the job every day for 30 years. Certainly, the last 12 years, I've learned a lot. But in the last five years, I'm confident to tell you, I know what the job is. I do it every day. I know what the right thing to do is, and I do the right thing.
What can you do for the morale of the officers who would serve under you? How would you motivate them? How would you get them on the same page as you're on? How would you get them to implement your goals?
So again, I'm lucky, because for the last 10 years, I've been the recruitment officer. So I think I get the ability to have a different connection with the officers. Before they get hired, I introduce themselves to me as Lieutenant Mike Bryant. You're going to call me Mike until you go through this process. I want them to see me as a human being. So the officers that work for us today, they got to know me as Mike first. This is what policing is. This is what the Yarmouth Police Department has. This is what we have to offer you as an employee. So my relationship that I had with them started day one on a personal level. It transitions from there, when they get hired, to now I have to be Lieutenant Bryant. But if you need me, wink, wink. I'm still Mike. Come talk to me. And I'm so confident that I have a great working relationship with the officers that we've hired, because I was able to build that trust in that level before they started. Prior to that, there was many occasions where officers wouldn't walk into my office. They would freeze at the door and wanted to stop because they were intimidated. So recognizing that and breaking down that barrier, I've been doing that for the last 10 years. That's what I would bring to the table. I already have a great working relationship with them. I already know what bothers them, what they like, what they don't like. And having those small conversations can go a long way with individuals on a personal level.
I'm going to go to the darkest next. If you have a question, if you don't, you can defer to Peter.
Well, actually, for the sake of the folks listening, because you've mentioned it a couple of times, and it's just for clarification. Command staff. What are the positions that make up the five command staff?
So the command staff in your police department, Yarmouth, is the chief of police, the deputy chief, and the three lieutenants. That would be your command staff. Off of that would be the sergeants. So we would have staff meetings with the staff officers, the sergeants, at your supervisor level, and the five command staff would be the chief, the deputy, and your three different lieutenants.
Okay, when you talk about the three lieutenants, I'm assuming one of them is detectives, one of them is patrol. What's the third?
So when it comes to the patrol, there are two lieutenants that manage patrol. There's three different shifts, so they split the shifts. And then the ancillary duties off of that would be K-9, dispatch, SWAT team. So they break it down. From there, we have a traffic unit, mental health. So they all have, like I do, they have different side duties. So the two patrol lieutenants split the three patrol shifts, and then all of the other ancillaries duties.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Peter? Lieutenant Bryant, you've mentioned community policing several times. One, define it. Two, what would you do to get the rest of your folks to do more community policing, under your definition of community policing?
So I think a basic definition without using Webster's dictionary is, community policing is being there for the community, being open, being transparent, and being a part of the community. I said at the beginning, I live in the town of Yarmouth. I want to be a part of this community. I raised my daughter here. She played sports in town. That's being part of the community. So if you can empower your officers to be a part of the community, now granted, they don't have to live in town to be a part, but it certainly goes a long way. Empowering them, I think, is the biggest key to the success of that. And I'd said that at the beginning, when we talked about community policing efforts. It's not so much about the chief of police, your chief, being out there doing all the community policing programs. It's about your officers doing that. You know, one of the great examples I have for you is coffee with the chief. It really should be coffee with a cop, and that is how it was designed years ago. Is you want your police officers out in the community. You want to empower them to do that. Now, some of them may be uncomfortable sitting down at Dunkin' Donuts or a coffee shop, having coffee with the cop. But they may be more comfortable going to one of our parks and playing basketball with the kids. That's empowering them. What do they want to do? Get them out into the community and maintain that open transparency and be a part of the community. Hope that helped answer your question.
That goes a long way.
So if you were the chief, you'd share the chowder?
Well, I don't know how the chief stays as stealthily as he does with the chowder that he eats, and he usually follows it with ice cream. I would not be eating all of that chowder.
Pickleball.
Yes, it's just pickleball.
All right, so you'd like to see the community policing be extended to the officers as well as the upper management?
Oh, I think for it to be a bigger success than what we're managing today, the only way to do that is to bring as many people in as you can. You have 61 police officers, including the chief that works for you. To find what drives each one of them and to get them to participate in community policing at their level, I think you absolutely have to do that.
Let me ask you this question, if I could. Police training, very important issue. And I know that Chief Fredrickson has come before us many times at budget time and emphasized how important police training is. How important, where does that rank in importance for you as a chief of police? And if you could tell us what kinds of training exercises you think that are needed in the town of Yarmouth for your, for various reasons, for your officer's safety, for public safety, and so forth?
So in part, I can answer that by telling you folks that the number two, number one and two failures of departments are failure to train and failure to supervise. And I say that because that ends up in your hands. When departments fail to train and fail to supervise, that's when lawsuits happen. So we push training, because if we don't train and try to stay prepared for everything that we think can happen, and we base that on past experiences and what we think will happen in the future. And we all watch the news and we see bad things happening. And you find that their training cadre was bad, or they failed to train, or they trained in an item, I'll use school shooting, and it was 15 years ago. Are you really trained in that anymore? You're just not. So constant training, I think, is the key. It protects the officers, protects the town from liability, but more importantly, it makes sure we're protecting our citizens and guests. If we don't stay trained on items like active shooter or school shooting, it's a disservice to the town. So it can sound good to say, no, we trained in active shooting for a school 10 years ago, but everything has changed in 10 years. Our offices have changed in 10 years. And it's one of those skills that if you don't constantly do it, you will forget. And sadly, what will happen? Failure to act. And failure to act results from failure to train. And you don't want your police officers in your town not to train properly, so that they don't act. And we end up on the national news, and it's because we didn't train properly. So when your chief is up here banging the drum that we need money and funds to train, please listen.
Okay. I think if anyone doesn't have any questions, we're at the bewitching hour. So what I'm going to do now is, I told you initially, you could have some time at the end. We won't call it a We won't call it a closing statement. We'll call it Lieutenant Mike Bryant's time, where you can do whatever you want. You can summarize, you can point to things that we didn't cover. Whatever.
Whatever sounds really good.
Your time starts now.
Oh, I didn't know I was on the clock. No, I, on a serious note, I'm, I'm so humbled to be here. The town of Yarmouth and your Yarmouth Police Department have been great to me. I'm blessed that I can give back to the town and to the police department by being the professional that I am. I told you earlier, you can't make the wrong decision tonight. You have a tough decision to make, but you won't make the wrong decision. You have great professionals in front of you. I think the town is doing a great job bringing more young professionals in. Our people, like we talked about earlier, are our best asset. Maintaining that process is key. And really for me, that's what this is all about, is what's best for the town of Yarmouth and its police department. And I'm confident that you folks will make that best decision. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming in. Is it okay with the board if we take five minutes between now and the next interview? All right.
I'm sure Kevin won't mind waiting five minutes.
He's going to have to.
I think we need to let the, the TV folks know. Peter, can you sneak in the back there?
Let's hit some water. Are we doing so far okay?
I think it's going very well.
I think the interviews are going well, don't you? I think the candidates so far are really impressive.
Very impressive.
Hasta la vista, they're just strong. Not say anything we don't want repeated, except for we are live, huh? Well, that's a good thing, I guess.
On a completely different note, radar's showing the storms are coming.
Really?
Yep.
Oh, I hope so.
This time, this time I think it's going to hit us.
I hope so. When is that, oh, when is this positive event going to happen?
That's now, that's radar now.
Oh, I hope you're right.
We may be running for the cars later.
My lawn is gone.
I hope and pray. I didn't water those flowers.
I've got stuff dying in the yard.
I do too, yeah.
You know what's interesting?
I was just hoping that the rain would take care of it.
First two candidates, I think, have master's degrees in criminal justice. Not that, not that it's a big deal, but I think this candidate has a master's in public administration. Which is kind of like what our town administrator has.
They can't fit it behind my fence though, that's good. Not too many people listening today.
All set? Good evening. For the benefit of the public, our third candidate that we are interviewing tonight for the position of police chief is our current deputy police chief, Kevin Lennon. And for Deputy Chief Lennon's benefit, I'll just go over what the process is. You probably have figured it out already, but just in case. So at the beginning, we are, well, first of all, I want to congratulate you for being one of the three finalists. As I've mentioned before, for the sake of any of our viewers, these candidates were vetted by public, our consultant, Public Safety Consultants LLC. And Chief Russ Stevens is here tonight. He has met with the board in executive session and discussed the candidates. He has been live as part of our, our regular programming and has helped with the development of questions and so forth. You also were advanced by our town administrator, Robert Rittenhour. They have made a determination that all three candidates are very well qualified to be our next police chief and therefore there's no necessity to go looking for outside candidates. And acting on those recommendations, we have limited these interviews to all internal Yarmouth officers and lieutenants and deputy chiefs. So what will happen is you will, at the outset, have an opportunity to briefly talk about your, your education, training and experience and why you are applying for this position, why you feel you should be the next Yarmouth police chief. After that, we will rotate through the board with specific questions. If a board member has a follow-up question to a question that another board member asked, for example, if Dan asks a question and Mark has a follow-up on that same issue, then we will do that until there are no other follow-up questions, then we will move to the next questioner. And then at the end of all of this, we will have some time reserved for you to use however you wish to use it. I'm not going to call it a closing statement. I'm going to call it Kevin Lennon time, where you can summarize things that you've talked about, you can choose to talk about things you don't feel you had an opportunity to put forward or personal qualities that you feel are important that, that weren't, weren't either reflected in your resume or anything you want to do, you'll have that time at the end to wrap it up. So we're ready to go. What I'd like you to do now is for your introduction, tell us about your education, your training, experience and why you are applying to be the next police chief for the, for the town of Yarmouth.
Excellent, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the board for, for coming out tonight. I know this is a very exciting time for the town of Yarmouth. Chief Fredrickson has a outstanding reputation in the police department as well. So moving forward with the new chief is something that we're all excited about. So again, I thank you and I thank Chief Stevens for everything that you've done through the process. We all understood that the process needed to be as professional, transparent as possible because we are selecting the next chief, the, the head of law enforcement for the town and that's a very important position. So my name is Kevin Lennon. I am, I've been a police officer for 31 years. And when I was trying to prepare my opening, I was trying to think, how am I going to condense 31 years of law enforcement experience into something that people aren't going to fall asleep listening to me? So I'll make this as, as brief and painless as possible. But my law enforcement career started in 1991 with the town of Tisbury. I was there for two years, then I moved to the town of Yarmouth in 1993. My then girlfriend, soon to be fiance, now wife, told me, if you stay on the vineyard, we're not going to last very long. So I looked for an employment opportunity on Cape Cod. Came to Yarmouth in 93. I was a patrol officer for about eight years before getting promoted to the rank of sergeant. I was a patrol sergeant for about a year and then I was selected to take over the detective division. I supervised the detective division for almost nine years before getting promoted to lieutenant. As a detective sergeant, one thing I point out, I had to develop relationships very quickly in that position because I was not a detective before I became a detective sergeant. So I went into a role as a supervisor, knowing less than the people that I was supervising. So I really had to put my hat on and understand that I had to work with people that knew more than I did, but still be their supervisor. So it was a, it was a very good learning experience for me on being open with communication and working with them so I could supervise them effectively, but also learn from them at the same time. So it's very important for a supervisor to be humble, know what you know when you know it and know what you don't know and where to go to get the information. I became a lieutenant in 2008. I have served in my tenure as a lieutenant. I was a detective lieutenant. I oversaw all the, the investigations of the detective division with the, with the sergeant. I was a patrol lieutenant. So with that, I supervised nine sergeants and 41 patrol officers. And then I was a, an administrative lieutenant. So I've seen all three facets at the command level as a lieutenant, what the police department does. I was promoted to deputy chief in 2019, December of 2019, a position I still hold. And with that, I oversee the day-to-day operations of the organization through the command staff, the, the lieutenants. I have a bachelor's, I have an associate's degree in criminal justice from Cape Cod Community College. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Western New England College. I have a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College and I am a proud graduate of the FBI National Academy, which I attended that training in 2008. I know Lieutenant O'Malley went to the academy, so I'm sure, I'm sure expanded on that a little bit, but the National Academy is a 10-week advanced law enforcement training program down in Quantico, Virginia. Candidates are selected by nomination through the department head based on their leadership qualities. So I was selected to go to the academy. I was in class 233. It was a great experience for me. A little tough to move away for 10 weeks, but the networking, the training, the experience that you get down there is second to none. And the, the statistic is that approximately 1% of active law enforcement police officers worldwide are able to attend the National Academy and then successfully graduate. I have lifelong friends from the NA now that I can contact. If we have an issue with the police department, I can send out an email and get a response from people from California, from Canada, from Africa. The, the network is tremendous. So, so it's, that was a really cool experience. I've learned a lot in my career as a police officer. I've handled a lot. I've supervised most of the major projects within the organization for about the past 10 years. I supervised the, the security upgrade, the implementation, implementation of GPS within the police department. I was in charge of the implementation of the body camera program and the cruiser camera program, which I'm proud to say, we received the equipment three weeks ago. And we actually have 10 cruisers today that have cruiser cameras 90% installed. Supply chain issues, they didn't ship a couple of parts, so they won't be ready for another couple of weeks, but we're hoping by mid-September to have our body camera and cruiser camera project up and running. I have a decent amount of experience with our budget. When I was a lieutenant, I was lucky enough to be tasked with, with taking over some of the responsibilities of handling the budget. So I worked, I've been working on the budget for about four or five years. The last couple of years, very involved with the budget, with the chief and with Cheryl Jacobson, rolling up the budget, working on capital projects. And then Cheryl and I over the last year have really been working on coming up with metrics so we can, we have a better understanding of where our money is being spent throughout, you know, not just in like a, a six-month, three-year period, but we're starting to look at quarterly and even monthly so we can get a better understanding on how our expenses are going, where we're hitting the mark, where we may be falling a little bit short. We're, we're, we're developing a, a way to look at how much time off is going to cost us so we know that officers have X amount of time. So we're putting their overtime rate to that to see if you had to replace them at 100%, what would that cost us at 80%, at 50%, at 40%? And then trying to come up with a way to determine, okay, what do we need so we can speak a little more intelligently when we go before the, the finance committee and say, this is what we're looking for and this, these are the reasons why. When the chief and I met with the finance committee, just, you know, about a month ago, we were talking about the budget and when we, we had to ask for additional funding, they were asking questions. And one of the things that came up was that they really want to be made aware a little bit sooner than, than, than we had an opportunity to tell them what was going on. So one of my goals is to make sure that, that we are watching the budget a little more closely than we are now and keeping the town administrator, the, the board of selection and the finance committee up to speed on where our spending is going so that if we are looking at overruns, we can, we can recognize those much earlier than, than what just happened. And it was at no fault of anybody. We knew that this budget cycle was going to be difficult because of the contract that we settled, which was, you know, in my opinion, a, a very good contract because we went away from the five and three schedule. We have the four and two schedule now, which puts us on par with most of the police departments in the area. We bought the Quinn, we brought the Quinn bill back, which is the educational incentive, which is a very important part for hiring police officers because we're hiring people now. We need critical thinkers. We need police officers that can do the job with empathy, without bias, but they have to be critical thinkers because the, the, the issues that we're facing today are much different than the issues that I was facing when I started here in 1993. I would go to roll call at midnight, go to the Mill Hill Club and wait for a fight to break out. And that's what we did back then. And things have changed dramatically since then. Our mental, our calls for mental health have gone up, our, you know, the opioid crisis has affected our community. So the things that we dealt with back then, writing reports for B and Es, that doesn't happen as much anymore. So a lot has changed, but.
Population of Mill Hill's changed too.
Population has, Mill Hill's changed.
Not so many fights.
Not so many fights there. I think that, that I'm prepared to be the next chief and I think, I know I'm prepared to the next chief because I've, I've worked very hard throughout my career to always take that next step and look at that next level to see what do I need to do to improve myself? I went for my master's degree back in 2015. The department didn't have the Quinn bill, so there was no educational incentive for me to go get it. I wanted to get it because I knew that that was the next piece that I needed to make. I wanted to get it because I knew that that was the next piece that I needed to make myself a qualified candidate. So I went and I could have done it in criminal justice, but I figured public administration would be something that would would broaden my horizons because I took class on statistics. I took class on strategic planning, so there was a, oh, there was a good number of classes that I took that kind of went away from the basic criminal justice. Not to take away from the master's degrees in that program, but I just wanted to expand myself a little bit. And then I've always worked to just. Be a little bit better every time I go to work, learn something a little bit differently, strive a little bit harder to to learn. I've always taken on projects. They always say if you, you know, you want, you want something done, look for the busy person in the department. And I think if you polled the department right now, I'm the one that they would say, you know, Kevin is the busiest person in the department. It's a little bit of a fault of mine right now and during my interview with Chief Stevens, he 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 pointed that out to me and I know it that. I haven't let go as as many things as I should have at this point because as a deputy chief, I'm still very involved with I T work within the within the department. I'm still involved very heavily with writing grants and managing those grants and I need to push that information off. But I've always tried to work to make myself. The best person that I could professionally and personally. And through that, I think I've developed quite, I've developed an extensive resume. For your benefit, I condensed it down to two pages. I figured thirty years, I probably could have covered eight pages in a resume, but I really tried to condense it down so that it wasn't too boring to read. But I've done a lot in my career. I'm proud of the the accomplishments, the accomplishments that I've had. I've learned a lot from the former chiefs, whether it's Chief Carnes, Chief Almonte or Chief Frederickson. Friends of mine that are chiefs and command staff on what to do to get to that next level and. Nobody's ever going to be a hundred percent qualified to do it the day that they step in the door to be the chief. That's impossible. But I know where I can go to get the assistance that I need if I don't have an answer and, you know, I joke around. People will come to me because the chain of command, they come up to me and they see me and they'll give me a problem and there are plenty of times that I walk into the chief's office and my thought process is, I could be the chief of police. I know exactly how to solve this. There are plenty of times where I walk into the chief's office and I'm handing him a hand grenade and the pin is half hanging out. And I look at him and say, here you go, buddy. Good luck with this one. Here's my solution, but you're the one that has to deal with it. So I'm confident that through. Watching other people succeed as my previous chiefs have through my training, through my experience, that I've built the the confidence, the skills and the abilities to lead the department forward.
Thank you. We'll start with questions. And I will go first. Not because I want to go first, but I was ordained to go first. Question is this, what are some of the ways you would work as police chief to develop a good relationship between? The citizens of this town and the police department and why do you think that relationship is important?
Well, our our foundation starts with the relationship with our community. Without trust, the police department has nothing. So we need to make sure that we are building up that trust, so when incidents like Minneapolis and George Floyd happen and and other parts of the country, because we're looked at the same when all that happens. They don't see a Yarmouth police officer at first. They see a police officer. And we need to make sure that that we work and build that trust with the community so that when those things do happen. That the people in Yarmouth say, that's not Yarmouth, that's not our police department and we know it's not our police department because we have a relationship with them through things like the Citizens Police Academy. And things like National Night Out and we do. You know, High Five Friday so that the kids get to know the police, the police officer. So. One thing that 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 I want to see change and I'm gonna, I'm gonna work to 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 get this to change is, you know, the administration, the chief and I and then the former deputy. Have done a great job marketing the police department and getting out there and branding the police department. I think that our our rank and file civilians and sworn officers, they're the touch points in the community. They're the ones that have. More interaction with the citizens than the chief and the deputy chief do. I want to see them out there more interacting with the public so that they say that's officer so and so, that's dispatcher so and so. So that we can build that trust from all levels, almost like three hundred sixty degrees around the organization. So again, when something does happen, we have that trust factor built with them so that, you know, it's. It's going to take a little bit, you know, and when when bad things happen in law enforcement, again, we're sometimes we're painted with the same brush, but I think that if we have those relationships built up front, it's easier for us to rebound. We have a great program. It's the Crime Watch program. I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow. We meet once a month and they still have eighty some odd block captains. That's one area that I think we can improve upon. It's it became a little bit stale with. With COVID, not to anybody's fault, but people stopped socializing, they stopped getting together. So we're looking at a way to revitalize it. We were able to go to the foundation and get funding so we can. Print the new pamphlet, a new three page pamphlet so we can get it out and I'm working with Lee and and the other volunteers to figure out ways that we can get the information out. And it's, it's about having, I don't want to use the door, open door policy, but something similar where people feel comfortable coming to the police department and talking to us. That's that, that's got to be a friendly place. You know, bring their kids in, meet police officers, do station tours, really get back in touch with the youth of our community because that's where our foundation has to start. And we have to build from there, but then we also have to look at our other population. We have a. We have a high elderly population in the community and some are isolated, so can we look at ways to get to them? You know, maybe we're we we just started a part time community policing position. I would like to see if it's feasible, make that a full time position and get that person involved with like Meals on Wheels. So that the the elderly, the person who is getting serviced by the senior center gets to talk to a police officer in uniform on a weekly basis. The information that we can, that we can get from that is tremendous. So I think it's, you know, keeping the lines of communication open, making sure that we're spreading out so that's not just the top down. I honestly, I don't understand how the chief doesn't weigh three hundred pounds. That's a, that is a medical miracle with with, you know, chowder with the chief and ice cream with the chief. Those are all great things. I would probably be dead of a heart attack today if I tried to do that, but I really want to.
You gotta play pickleball. That's the answer. I know that for a fact. I saw it on Facebook.
That has to be true.
And Facebook doesn't lie.
Really start to to get more engagement from the from the officers and and from the line staff and I think that that would be a tremendous help for us.
Does anyone have a follow up? Because I do have one other part of this question though. Do you, Peter?
I do. I I I think your concept of getting the rank and file out and about, how are you going to do it?
We need to do a better job of sitting down and asking what their what their goals are and find out what what kind of makes them tick. When we do our interviews, when we hire new new employees, we sit there and 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 part of it is kind of holding their feet to the fire too, because when we do an interview, we hear all the time. I'm a tremendous supporter of community policing. I look at your website and I love all these things that you do and then without. Follow up, those things kind of fall to the wayside. It is difficult for an officer who's on the midnight to eight shift to be as involved as others, but there are things that they can do, so. You know, we do the business check. So we require that the officers check three businesses, the shift checks three businesses within the night and they leave a card. We get some great feedback from that. Step that up a little bit. Look to get the midnight date officers more involved with going to the schools. Like the high school when it's when it's opening and now right now we do security of the schools, but get them involved, standing out back with Dick Pascarosa. Or with John Tibbetts from the from from the Dennis Police Department and have those officers get more engaged with the students. But it's really, we need to do a better job. When we're, when the supervisors are doing evaluations to sit down with the officers and say, okay, you know, what are some of your goals? What do you want to do? Not everybody can be a SWAT officer, not everybody can be a detective, not everybody can be in our PAC unit, but everybody can be a community policing officer. And really work with them to find out, you know, maybe it's not high fiving people that they're interested in doing, but maybe they'd love to go grab an ice cream with the chief. And just work around that and see what they're interested in doing and I I think we'd be, we would be pleasantly surprised when we start peeling the onion back to figure out what makes them tick and what makes them want to do what they want to do.
Deputy Chief, I think public perception of any profession, whatever it is, is very important. There's a lot of news that maybe doesn't affect us. In a local sense, but. Affects police officers negatively from some of the atrocities that have occurred in the news. The defund the police rhetoric, things like that. There's a lot of pressure on the police department. So given all of the, and people have a tendency to generalize, something can happen out in Minnesota, but all police are bad guys, you know? And people don't seem to ma- make the make the analytical distinctions that they should make. Given that climate and the things that police are up against these days. How do you build a positive public perception of your department? So that, so that the people in your community are going to be comfortable saying, that's not us, that's not what our guys and women are about. We're nothing like that. We have a, we have good people. How do you build that image in view of all that national negativity?
Well, there's a couple of ways. One, we have to control the narrative. We have to be in charge of what goes out, at least from the Yarmouth Police Department. So when something like that does happen, we have. I I think the number is about fifty thousand followers on Facebook and not all of them are Yarmouth residents, but we've, we've a tremendous reach. We have a Twitter account, so when something happens, we can immediately stand up and have a voice in Yarmouth and say, what we saw is wrong and this is the reason why it's wrong. And, you know, come out against it when appropriate. We certainly don't want to want to rush to judgment when something happens. We want to make sure that we have all the facts, but get the information out so the citizens understand that we're paying attention to what's going on. Within our region, within the, within the Commonwealth and then nationally, so we're we're in tune with going on and get our message out that that is not the Yarmouth Police Department. And then I touched on our community policing programs, but get those, bring those, but we had, we've had one of the longest running citizen police academies. I think in in this, in the Commonwealth. We do a good job at that. We can improve upon that. Everything gets stale after a while, but there are things that we can do to make it better. Through the through the Crime Watch program, the the Neighborhood Crime Watch program. They do meetings and we don't get a lot of people to come out. I think it's time that we start going to them. There are block captains, so we set up a, we set up a meeting and it, it's going to be time consuming, but to get to, you know, maybe call the block captain and say, if you'll host ten people at your house, we'll send a police officer there to talk to you and find out what's going on. And that way we're getting out in the community more, again, working with our youth. We have officers that, we have Sean Brewer in the in the in the school. And with the new, when the new school opens up, we're going to have, I think the number is up to nine hundred kids in that school. That is a great opportunity for us to look to put another police officer in the school that has more interactions with those children. But it shouldn't just be, in my opinion, shouldn't just be an S R O. Every one of our officers that's working the street should have the ability to go into the school, not as an S R O because there are specialized training that they have to do to 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 do that. But to go in and and be a friendly face in the school. Instead of parking at the end of Station Ave and and waving to the parents when they're dropping the kids off. Encourage them, get out of the car, take your hat off and be a little little more approachable to the kids that are going in. When I did High Five at Station Ave, I stood off to the side and I was talking to one of the teachers and the car loads of kids coming in. It was, it was awesome. Did you see the kids coming in to be able to talk to me as, you know, yes, deputy chief in the uniform, but getting high fives from the kids and and just engaging with them. So there are, there are many things that we can do within the community to get our message out and it's got to be constant. It can't be every once in a while, you know, we, I try and update our Facebook page as much as possible. I try and put out. Good that the police department's doing and I also put out. Some of the arrests that we make, which I know is not always a popular thing because we don't want the people to think that this is an unsafe community. But the chief now and the former deputy chief, they took some some hits, you know, years passed because, you know, that you're making the town look like a bad place. But we're really just telling the people what goes on in our community because our officers are out there risking their lives, taking dangerous people off the street. And they need, they need recognition for that. So there's a balance there, but I think that that we can definitely do a better job getting our message out. Making sure that again, when an incident happens someplace else. Like you said, Chairman Stone, we're all painted with the same brush at that time. It's our responsibility to make sure that that people understand that that's not Yarmouth PD, that's not what we, that's not who we hire. That's not what we we will accept from our police officers and if they, if they cross the line, you know, there will be consequences, as there should be with any police department. If we don't have the public trust, we have nothing. We cannot survive as an organization. It's just not going to work.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go for the next question to Selectman Horgan.
Good evening, Lieutenant.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Administration of Select Board have discussed from time to time the desire to possibly get state accreditation for our police department. Is that a worthwhile goal? Why is it, if it is? And if it is, how would you get us there?
I believe it's a worthwhile goal. We have tried, the police department has tried for many, many years to get accredited, but there are things that have set us back. We had a lieutenant that was working on it. He retired, so we were kind of there and then then it fell off. We had another lieutenant working on it and then he left the department. We had a civilian come in that tried to get us there. That didn't work. We. We had to stop what we were doing after the death of Sean Gannon. So, you know, we we've, we have tried, but we just haven't, you know, really hit. Hit it off the way that that we that we should. I think it's important that the department is accredited because it shows that that we are meeting the highest standards for law enforcement. And it shows that we are a professional organization and it's going to take some work. What what I want to do as the chief of police is put a team together that are going to work on accreditation run by the deputy chief. I can say that because I'm not doing it now. Put that person in charge and have a team of lieutenants, sergeants and get get as many people on the department that we can possibly get involved in the beginning so we can, we can make sure that we're. We're reaching everything that that we need to do. I am not, so Lieutenant O'Malley is currently the accreditation manager, so he's been to the training. I have not been to all the training that he's been to, so I'm not, I don't know everything that comes with accreditation, but I need to learn. But I think it is a worthwhile goal for the organization. I've spoken to other police departments that are accredited. And it is something that we should strive for. I tried to apply for a grant, but I missed the deadline. And we were going to ask for about a hun, we were going to ask for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to try and get grant funding. I'm hoping that that comes around again because we came up with a very solid plan. Of taking a patrol officer off the road, making them solely responsible for accreditation under the direction of a lieutenant. And then bringing in other people as needed so we could get it done. I know it is a. It's, it's not something that we can't do. We just really need to make it a priority for the department and put our head down to get and get it done.
Thank you.
Follow up by anybody? Peter?
Every, every business has different terms, S R O.
I'm sorry, School Resource Officer.
Thank you. I I knew what it meant, but I'm sure some other people didn't.
Okay. We will go next to Selectman Mark Forrest.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to the town. I want to thank you for applying for this position and congratulate you for being one of the finalists. There has been over the years, a lot of off and on discussion about. Police and fire dispatch. And we're very interested in your thoughts regarding the benefits and challenges of merging both dispatch centers.
I believe that the biggest benefit that we're going to get is increased service to the to the community and that's the number one focus. Right now, the police department is the primary answering point, so all the nine one one calls come to us and then we push them over to the fire department. So before we took the wireless calls, which we started taking a couple of years ago, if somebody called nine one one, they could go to Middleborough, then come to the Yarmouth Police Department, then go to the fire department. And you can hear the frustration on people having to tell the same story three times to finally get an ambulance sent. So we now take the wireless calls into the station and we have a grant that we get. It's the the support incentive grant. We get a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars per year. That pays for one full time dispatcher and then we use the rest of the money to either buy equipment. Which this year I used it to buy a couple of new M D, a couple of new computers for the cruisers and then the balance of that goes towards overtime replacement for the certified dispatchers. I believe that that we could make joint dispatch work. We would need to get the. Stakeholders, the police department, the fire department together, the town, the town administration and sit down and decide what we're going to do and how we're going to make it work, but it can work. And the benefit again is going to be to improve the services that we're giving to the community. If we have a police and a fire dispatcher sitting next to each other and a call comes in. We're not now transferring it down to somebody who has to pick it up. They can immediately hand it off. If another call comes in, whether the fire department can get easily overwhelmed, because sometimes I I believe most of the time I only have one dispatcher working. We cross train our our dispatchers so that they're police and fire cross trained and they can bounce back and forth. It's worked in other communities. It works in Sandwich, it works in Barnstable, so there's no reason why we can't get it to work in Yarmouth. What we need to do is, and I have a great relationship with with Acting Chief Sawyer, we've, you know, we we've worked together for many years. We need to sit down and and just figure out what is the best for the community. Neither the police or fire would come out of that. Neither the police or fire would come out of that meeting 100% satisfied. I know that just from previous meetings that we had, because if you took dispatch out of the police department, we would have to get somebody that's that really sits in the in the building, because our lobby is so busy. If you takes the dispatcher out of the fire department, they have walk-ins that go into the old Main Street, so they would need somebody down there. But we need to look at and figure out what is the best for our community. What services are we trying to provide? And the thing that we're trying to provide to our community is when you call 911, you don't have to talk to three people to get an ambulance sent. You can get those resources quicker. It will professionalize, but maybe that's a bad term. It'll it'll allow our dispatchers to become more better trained. But with that is going to come definitely labor relations, because our dispatchers are in SEIU and the fire dispatches in the fire union, so we're going to have labor relations. I don't believe that we would see cost savings, at least not immediately. But I think it's something that we should strive to do to make sure that, again, that we are providing the best services to our community.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a follow up question. Who's in charge?
Well, if I know that with some of the some of the the regional models, so you would have the chief and the fire chief would would be the overall heads of it, and then you you would appoint command staff. But the the overall goal would be to hire a dispatch supervisor, a civilian who would who would work as a dispatcher, but also be the one that manages the grants and the training and everything that goes on. Every time we hire a dispatcher, they do a three-month field training program. They have to do 56 hours of training with 911. And then anybody who is certified as a dispatcher has to do 16 hours of continuing education every year. I did that until last year. I was the one that managed the grant, and I was the one that managed all the training. I've now tasked that with a lieutenant, but we would have somebody who could do all that work, free that work from a from one of our patrol lieutenants, but also be somebody who can work as needed on the desk. And it's, you know, we would need we would need a manager, but there would be a there would be a a command, a chain of command from that.
Thank you.
I was going to ask the same question about the structure for the supervision part of it, because do you agree that really it's a there's a big political component there that that has to be dealt with?
There is. We, you know, the the fire department and the police department, we have our own, and we don't want to change. We're sometimes we're set in our ways. So, you know, we would want to make sure that that we work those those issues out. You know, when I when I was talking to Chief Stevens, I use the term, and I don't want it to be derogatory, but we need to leave our egos at the door and come in and sit down and just make sure that we are hitting what we're trying to do, and we're trying to provide the best services. And we need to make sure that, again, the police department is never going to come out at 100%. The fire department is never going to come out at 100%. There's going to be some things that we want that we're not going to get. There's going to be some things that they want that they're not going to get. Our department, our station right now, has four positions. With with, I'm not going to minimize it, with some work, we could probably move the fire over to the police department, take the sergeant out of dispatch, and put two dispatchers in the front and two two dispatchers in the back. It's all set up for 911. We have a dedicated line with Comcast that comes in, so the technology, that the infrastructure is there for that to work. But if we did that, then we would have to work with the fire department on them losing somebody at their front, you know, at their front, their front door, mate, watching the desk. And then it's also, like you said, who's in charge? Because do we want a police officer supervising a fire dispatcher? Because they have different.
That's the political part. That's not going to work.
They have different SOPs, and that's why we would need to come up. That's why they would need to come out of their respective unions and become a new group. And under that new group, we would then form the chain of command, and it would, you know, hiring would have to be worked out. You know, police and fire working together on the hiring board. Once you bring people inside the police department, it changes with CEGIS regulations that we have to follow. So there would be there would be quite a few hurdles that we would need to get over. But again, I look at our partner over at Barnstable. They took on Hyannis Fire. I'm sure that they had some hiccups, but they're making it work. So if Barnstable can make it work, we have enough dedicated, intelligent people working for the town of Yarmouth, we can make it work. We just have to look at some of the models that are being successful right now and take little pieces from those and weave it into what we want to do here.
Okay, next question. I'm going to go to Selectman Guerin.
Deputy Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
By being here, of course, you are one of our three candidates for police chief. Thank you very much for all of your service to reach this point. And here's the question for you. There are three of you that are interviewing tonight, but only one of you is going to get the job. So if you're the one that gets the job, how do you handle the other two candidates, working with them and mentoring them?
I don't think that it's going to be a problem. I have Lieutenant Bryant and I, he started about a year after I did, and we've always had a great working relationship. Lieutenant O'Malley and I were very good friends. We've traveled together. I was in his wedding. We are we're we're a tight group. It's not going to be a problem. When I was when I became a sergeant and I was supervising people that I was friends with, there was always that personal, professional relationship and the boundaries that you have to have. As you start moving up through ranks, you can't accept the position and only take on some of the responsibilities. You accept the position and you take on all of the responsibilities, good and bad, and with that comes a shift in personal and professional relationships. That's just natural. As you move through the ranks, you know, you slowly start losing some of those personal relationships, and that's just natural, and you have to be able to accept it. Working with working with the two of them, I do it now. I supervise them both now. They're both the lieutenants that I work with, and we have very open and honest conversations. It's we have a great line of communication. They each have their specialty, their areas of specialty that they're working in now. So if 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 I'm lucky enough to become the chief of police, those relationships would just continue. Because we I built, I believe that I've built a solid foundation with both of them, actually with all of them, because the other lieutenant I'm very friendly with as well. But we know that there is a professional relationship, and there's a personal relationship, and they can't they can't intermingle. You can't have hard feelings, because I'm the deputy chief. I'm never not the deputy chief. It's probably improper English, but I am always the deputy chief, working and not. I cannot take that hat off, because if something happens, I have responsibilities. They are both true professionals. They are well educated. They have gotten to where they are because of the great job that they've done with the police department. So moving forward, if I become the chief, and then I'm supervising them from just a higher level, nothing's going to change. And I will continue to work with them and continue to promote them and continue to, you know, have them seek extra training, because it's the, you know, the one of the best marks of a supervisor is to train somebody who then takes over for you and hits the ground running and does a better job than you did. When I was on the SWAT team as a team supervisor, Lieutenant Bryant was was an assistant team commander, and Lieutenant O'Malley was was about the same level. He may, I I think Mike was a team leader and Drew was an assistant. I always work with developing them so that they could take over for me. That's the ultimate goal. So I don't see any changes with our relationships. And my job as a good leader is to make sure that I develop, I continue to develop them. We're all here because we all want the job, but only one of us, as you said, can can rise to the to the top. However, however it shakes out, and I I believe I'm the most qualified candidate with the years of experience and the job that I've and the jobs that I'm doing now, that we just have to sit down and have a have a frank meeting and say, okay, this is what came out, and this is what we're going to do to to move on. And I I truly believe that with the relationships that I've built with them and others within the organization, it's not going to be difficult at all. We have a great working relationship. We are very open with each other, but we're also respectful of our ranks, and I don't see that that being a problem at all.
Thank you.
Peter?
On those same lines, some individuals perceive that there's a soap culture in law enforcement, that there's an adherence to a code of silence, especially when it comes to friends. And that when there is wrongdoing on the part of a police, and how would you provide transparency within the community to reassure that this would not happen and not occur in Yarmouth under your leadership?
I I believe, I strongly believe that through their our former administration and our current administration, that that those myths, at least in Yarmouth, would be, people know that that's not true. Not everybody knows how we handle discipline, because it's not it's not public knowledge. But I can tell you firmly that we how we hold our officers to an extremely high standard. We expect, I expect our officers to come into work and do the job that they're required to do, but do it in a courteous manner, do it in a professional manner, and do it in an ethical manner. And if we have policies and procedures and rules and regulations, and we have a policy on conducting professional standards investigations and how to handle them. It's an unfortunate side of the job that we have to do at times, but when we do have to, when we have to take those steps, we are fair, we are impartial, we look at the individual, we look at the infraction, and we handle them swiftly to make sure that there's not a recurrence. I would not be the type of chief that would that would allow that to happen under, you know, under under reform. You know, we have the, you know, you have to speak up now. Well, that's something that always should have been there. But I can I can say with 100% certainty that, you know, with our organization, that is not going to be there. We will not tolerate that. And that's a message that we have, we push throughout the department. We want to make sure, you know, go back to being, when I was talking about being a supervisor, and you can't only do the good stuff. You have to take the bad along with it, and sometimes that means that you have to have those uncomfortable uncomfortable conversations, sit down with somebody, point out something that they may have done wrong, but then pick them up on the other side and help them through it. And we have a great track record of dealing with issues when they arise, and we are, I don't want to use the term lucky, but we don't have some of the problems that other police departments are facing right now, just some of the stuff that was in the news from a neighboring agency. It makes us all look bad, but they're dealing with it. We are, we have been lucky, and I think it's because of the the staff that we have, the command staff that we have picked, the sergeants that we have picked, and quite frankly, the officers that we've hired. We have extremely high standards for the people that we hire, and we do the best we can to train them and to vet them. And if they if they if there's a mistake that they make, we deal with it immediately. We do not let things sit. That's not the type of organization that we are, and that's not the organization that we'll be moving forward. You know, it's, you don't, not everybody is set out to be a police officer. Sometimes we hire people, and they look like they're great candidates, and they just don't work out. And that's unfortunate. But what we need to do, what I would need to do as the chief, if you if it comes across my desk, I'm dealing with it. And I will deal with it professionally. I will deal with it with, you know, as promptly as possible, and the chips will fall will will fall where they may. And now with post, you know, we're not going to, I don't believe we're going to see those those people that are that you could hide, you know, as in the past. I think that that is going to make our profession better. It's going to make us more professional. We're we're always held to a higher standard, but I think this is really going to push us to that next level, which at sometimes is needed, because there have been police departments that they put a they give everybody a bad reputation, because they do. They take somebody that shouldn't be a police officer, and they put them on the shelf. And then when news comes out about it, like, how did that person stay in that position for that long? It makes us all look bad. But I can tell you with confidence, that's not Yarmouth PD. That's not the way that we operate.
Again, your offset to that is your community policing. And and, you know, you you talk about getting painted with a bad brush, the state police and the overtime scandals that have been going on and on, which you're crazy. And I know that's not the Yarmouth Police. I'm not even suggesting that in any way, shape, or form, but it does paint entire police function with a with a bad brush.
It does, and and what we do, and we we've done a very good job of, we will put messages out like that. Lieutenant O'Malley is our is our training lieutenant, and he is constantly putting out messages about leadership and what a leader should do and how a leader should act. And it's, you know, it starts at the top and and it goes down, and we have to make sure that that we hold ourselves to the highest standard possible. We hold our officers and our staff, not just our officers. We have we have a, you know, 11 civilian staff. They have to follow the same rules that the police officers have to follow, because we we can't have a civilian staff member do something that's illegal or criminal, and that's going to put us in a bad light as well. So we look at every, as I said before, you know, that's not Yarmouth. That's not the way that we've ever operated. We have a tremendous amount of pride in the town, in our department, in the badge and the uniform that we wear. And when things, when people tarnish it, it upsets the good cops, and we want to make sure that that's who we are employing with our town. And I think that the previous administrations have done a great job setting us up in a position so that we can carry that forward.
Can I just follow up that? You've already answered this to a degree. But in a spirit of consistency, I've asked the question of the other candidates, and I want to ask you. Speaking of the situation in a neighboring town, two senior police officers suspended one for over a year. How do you deal with a situation like that, especially when it comes to transparency with the public?
I don't know the full. I don't know the full details of those investigations, and I know that the Barnstable Police Department is civil service, which may have something different to do with with the process on, you know, either the suspension of the officer or if they're working towards termination. I don't know, but the worst thing that you could do is say no comment. If we make a mistake, we have to own it to a certain degree. There's only, we we can't release everything. There's information that we that we can release, and we have to make sure that, you know, we're balancing the the rights of the officer who's in trouble with the needs of the public to know what's going on. But I think we would need to do a better job getting that information out, and I believe that we have done that in the past. We've, you know, we don't have a lot of professional standards investigations, which is good. But we don't tolerate even just rude behavior. We we had to speak to an officer not that long ago, because he stopped a car and and he swore. It it the person got under his skin, and they came in and complained, and, you know, 20 years ago, that would have been, thank you, have a nice day, and probably nothing would have happened about it. We brought the officer in. Lieutenant sat him down, spoke to him, talked to him about, and the officer said, yeah, you're absolutely right. Person got under my skin, and we move on. So we use those as learnings. But back to your question about what's going on in a neighboring community, I can't speak to what their procedures are, but I could say that you know, when it when it comes out in the Cape Cod Times, you have two high-ranking police officers from another organization, like you said, one out for a year. You know, you have to balance the personal rights of the officer with, you know, what the public needs to know and get some sort of message out so that they have trust that what you're doing is the right thing, and you're not burying it. You're not giving that person six months so they can figure out a way to retire. Because sometimes that's not the way to do it. Like, if somebody's close to retiring, and you can, you know, kind of move them in that direction and speed it up a little bit, okay, maybe you do that. But if somebody needs to be terminated, you have to have the you have to have the ability to do that, and that's not an easy thing to do. But that's what you have to do. We are held to a higher standard. We are expected to be above everybody else. And if we don't do that, and you have those, you know, that that veil of secrecy, that just erodes the public trust, and it makes it more difficult for the good police officers to go out and do their job, because they're looked at the same as those other ones. So I'm confident that the administration over there, because I know Chief Sonnenbaum. We kind of grew up in the police departments together. I know the deputy chief over there. I know that they are very professional people, so I'm I'm going to say that they're doing everything that they possibly can do to make sure that they have a a good outcome for the department and the community. As, you know, farther than that, I I don't I don't know. It could be something to do with civil service, and that's why it's taking as long as it is.
Thank you.
One of the questions that I had asked in follow up to the other candidates, but you already answered it in your answer to Dan's question, is I asked if police should be held to a higher standard than civilians. You just said yes. Why? Why should you be held to a higher standard than civilians?
Because we're entrusted with protecting lives. We're, we may have to take a life if that's if that's necessary. We are entrusted with going into people's homes to check their houses when they're not home, going to businesses. We need officers to have the highest level of integrity, so that they know that when you send the police someplace, we're not going to be somebody who's going to liberate something out of a convenience store or do the wrong thing when nobody's looking. That's not, that's not what a police officer can be. The police officer has to be that highest level of professionalism and integrity. As I said before, we try and hire the best people that we can. Sometimes our vetting process through the hiring process, the background, the psychological, we miss something, and we and just meaning industry-wise, and you get a bad apple. Well, the most important thing to do then is, as soon as you identify that, don't turn your head, because as a supervisor, a supervisor is responsible, and they'll ask, what did you know? When did you know it? And what did you do about it? And that's what we we hammer that, for lack of a better term, into our supervisors, that this is what you need to do. When your officers are out on the road, you need to be paying attention to what they're doing to make sure that we don't end up going down that slippery slope. But we, as police officers, take an oath to protect the public. We take an oath to be the community caretaker. We take an oath to be the community caretakers. And because of that, we have to hold our health, ourselves to a higher standard.
If you had a young officer, male or female, very bright, very promising future, and they were involved, and you found this out after the fact, either as in your current position or as police chief, that that person was involved in a single-vehicle accident, hit a tree or telephone pole, something like that. And it came to your attention, so let's say several months later, that the person that went out to the scene, let's say a sergeant, patrol sergeant, kind of didn't report all the facts, and that there was good cause to believe this officer was driving under the influence. But, but, but those telltale signs that are typically in police reports, like slurred speech, bloodshot eyes, fumbling with the wallet, steady on the feet, tho- those kinds of things were omitted. And the police report was kind of doctored up a little bit to say, person seemed confused because of the trauma they suffered in the accident, that type of thing. And you found, that came to your attention. Say through outside sources or whatever, how would you handle that as to the young police officer and as to the supervisor?
We would have to look into it, because we cannot have, it's a very slippery slope if we allow, you know, some omissions out of a report when they, you know, the supervisor is not doing their job. So we have to look at it and say, is a supervisor capable of continuing to be a supervisor? Because if we cannot trust the actions of that supervisor when nobody's around, it erodes the trust of the organization. As a deputy chief, or as the chief of police, I can't go home on a Saturday and wonder, are my sergeants making the right decisions, and have that little nagging thing in the back of my mind. We have to trust that they are doing the right things. And in that situation, now, this currently, we would, we would initiate a professional standards investigation, and we would go through what we need to do. And there are, you know, the ways that we can deal with it. As far as the, the officer who, you know, may have been under the influence, a couple months later, there's not much we can really do with that, unless they came out and said, yes, I was blind drunk, but other than that, we don't have any evidence. As to the supervisor, if we can prove that the, that the report was changed a little bit, there's sanctions that can, that can, you know, we could look at it and say, should this person be suspended? Because something like that is certainly not gonna warrant just a, just a documented warning. It would have to be more than that, so should the person be suspended? Should we look at demoting the person? We, in the history of the police department, there's a supervisor that was demoted. And, you know, wanted to, you know, was told, you think you're gonna be demoted, but, you know, in a couple years, if you keep your nose down and you work hard, you can, you can try and get promoted again. We could look at something like that. Or if it rose to the level of there was complete, you know, there was dishonesty and untruthfulness, we can't tolerate that in law enforcement. That person would be discredited going over to court to testify. So if they're a patrol supervisor, they can't perform their function. You know, you can't have a patrol supervisor who would end up on, you know, a, the Brady, I think it's called the Brady List over at court, and, and then have the issue of them not being able to testify, because they're automatically discredited. We couldn't have that. So we would have to look at the circumstances and, and do a professional investigation, and then come up with a, come up with a punishment that, that fits what happened. And that could be up until termination, depending on the, the allegations and what we're able to sustain.
In your view, the failure to report those indicia of intoxication that I just mentioned, would that be the equivalent, in your mind, of lying?
It could be. It depends on how the report is written. If they, oh, omission is, is, could be considered lying, yes. So we would have to sit that, that officer down, that's our supervisor down, and speak to them, and make sure that we get their version documented, and then take the facts for what they are. But yes, that could be considered lying.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions before I go to the conclusion of this? No? Everybody fine? Everybody satisfied?
No, I'm fine, I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is Kevin Lynn in time. You can use this time any way you want. As I said before, you can summarize, you can bring out things that you don't feel that were brought out in the course of this questioning, or anything else you want to use the time for.
Oh, I, just a quick closing, I appreciate the time of everybody. Again, I appreciate the professionalism of this process. I just feel that, that my, my reputation in the community, my, my work ethic, my resume, what I've been able to accomplish as a Yarmouth police officer speaks volumes for the type of person that I am, and the part, type of person that I will be when selected to be the chief. I am very enthusiastic about moving forward. We have a great team, the Yarm, the Yarmouth Police Department is second to none. But we can always improve. So my goal as chief will be to start looking at different areas of the department and work towards improving them. Community service is something that is very dear to me. I didn't mention this earlier, but I'm a, I'm the past president of the Yarmouth Rotary Club. I've been a member of Rotary for eleven years, which is a great community service organization. I was on the board of directors for the Yarmouth Food Pantry. I'm currently on the board of directors for an organization called Cape Cod Bright Lights, and we pack bags on Wednesday nights during school for, for children at the ME Small School and at Station Ave that don't have enough food over the weekend. So I think community service is, is something that's, that's, that's needed from all, from all professions, especially, I think, from the police department. It really shows that, you know, that, that we care, that we're getting involved. So I, you know, I believe that I have all the, the skills and the abilities to do it. I'm not gonna walk in the door and hit a grand slam, that's not gonna happen. I have a lot to learn to be the chief, but I am firmly, I firmly believe, I strongly believe that, that I have the experience, the knowledge, and the capability, the personality, and the confidence to move forward and be the next chief of the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming forward, and, and we enjoyed the dialogue. I just did want to make one observation with respect to you, you, when you talked about officers in the schools meeting the kids and so forth. I remember Larry MacArthur, God rest his soul, who was the principal over here at the station, this, the, I guess now they call it the MacArthur Middle School, uh, Elementary School. And my kids went there every day when the bus came, he was there. I don't care if it rained, or snowed, or weather sleated. He was there giving high fives to the kids every single day. And you could tell what a difference it made with the kids starting their day off like that, and having that kind of connection with the principal of the school. I was really impressed when I saw that. And there was not a day that I went to that school that I didn't see that. He did that every single day with the kids, and it, it does have a big impact. So I just.
We start them out right in the beginning, and get them used to seeing a police officer and understanding that we're friendly, because we drive around in three thousand pound cars, driving down the road at twenty miles an hour. You're never gonna develop relationships. We have Officer Lenada, who's out on a motorcycle almost every day, because we've had thirty-five days without rain. So he's one of our traffic officers, and I was asking him about it, and I said, how's it going? And he goes, this is one of the greatest things I've ever done, because he goes to the beach, and the kids want to run up and talk to him about the motorcycle. So you start peeling back that metallic layer of the cruiser, and you can really start making great connections. We had an officer not too long ago stumbled upon a lemonade stand, and we did a social media post on it, and the parents were absolutely excited about, you know, the exposure, because the kids raised a hundred and eighteen dollars, and they donated it to the food pantry, which was right after.
How much were they charging a glass?
That I don't know.
That's been eighteen bucks.
That I don't know, but, but stuff like that is, you know, it's really, it's really cool for the police officers.
And, and in addition to commending the, the police officer, their parents deserve a lot of credit too, for motivating their children to do that.
Absolutely, because we want, we want our, you know, the most precious commodity that we have in our community is our kids. We want them to see police for, as friendly people, as people that they can approach. So in times of need, or just to say hi. And what we need to do as well is get our officers in tune with that, so that when they see somebody stop, say hi. That could change somebody's day, just walking up to a child and shaking their hand, or giving them a high five, or talking to them. You know, at National Night Out, to see the kids there, there's a couple kids wearing police uniforms, a couple kids wearing fire uniforms, and that's really cool to go out and see them interacting, and getting to know our officers, because that's where, you know, the, the rubber meets the road. We need our, the youth of our community to be involved with our officers. I'm really hoping that Alex Exaros is gonna be our part-time community policing officer. I'm hoping with some, with some guidance and, and allowing him to take that position to, to a newer level, that turns, turns into a full-time position. Alex is a great guy, and you just don't hear some of the stuff that he does. Like, last summer, he would go to Swan Pond Village when he didn't have a call, and get out and play basketball, and just start interacting with the kids. You know, he, you know, we, but I think we need, we need more officers like that, to get out of the cruisers more, interact with the community, and start breaking down those barriers. Because again, the police department is nothing without community support. We can certainly go out, and we can arrest people, we can do our jobs to a certain extent. But we need those relationships to keep it going, because we are community members ourselves. But we need that trust factor, we need that foundation, and that's how you build programs like the Youth Camp, or the Citizens Police Academy, or when somebody's in need, they come to us. Or if we need information, we can get it from them. It's a two-way street, but it's something that we really need to continue to build on.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and sharing your experiences with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
So I want to thank everybody that was involved in this process, my fellow board members, our town administrator, Bob Rittenhour, police chief, Frank Fredrickson, for his input, our human resources director, Sarah Riley. Anybody else, like anybody? And our consultant chief, Russ Stevens. All of them contributed significantly to this process. I thought we had great interviews, I think we have, I think I agree, based on those interviews, that we have three very, very strong candidates. I think there's gonna be some difficult decision-making, because I think they're all highly qualified people. I was hoping you'd have that one person that would emerge as head and shoulders above everybody, but I didn't see that. I thought they were all very qualified people. So I'm gonna be interested to hear from my fellow board members as we proceed, probably what, next meeting, to deliberate about. And what materials do we have to review between now and then? There, there was something about personnel files being, being.
The, the personnel file review has been completed, conducted in tandem by our human resources department, as well as Chief Stevens independently. And all three of the candidates, you know, came up just squeaky clean, highly professional, no, no black marks or blemishes on, on any of the candidates.
Can we just hear from the chief, just a few comments on that, just for the public's benefit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so what I did after, and it was Selectman Horgan that brought this up at the last meeting a week ago today. I reached out to Chief Fredrickson, and I asked him, do we have, we need access to the personnel files. We want to look through the personnel files, we're looking for any incidents that would cause a blemish, any things that would show, not, they didn't use proper discretion, any past IAs. And I advised, I requested that the human resource director be allowed to go down there and review the files in, in, in their entirety. Sarah went down there, reviewed each one of the files, there's nothing to indicate any past issues, or, and according to the chief, there's nothing to indicate any future issues or any pending issues now.
Okay.
You have three viable candidates, as you could see. I would say you're, you're meeting next week, and I would say, think about the depth of the answers to each one of your questions, and just resonate with that. Think about, you each asked all pretty much the same questions to all the candidates. Little variations, but that's fine, and, but it's the depth of the answers that you need to look at. And think about that as you move forward between now and next, and you deliberate next Tuesday.
Just, um, did you, did you feel that the questions that were, were posed to the candidates were sufficient to elicit the kind of information we need to make this decision?
So if you look at the whole process, the, the first process was a job announcement, and they had to put together their resumes. So we first look at their resumes to make sure that they meet the minimum qualifications, which they did. We look at their education, we look at the time served, we look at their rank, we look at what they've done throughout the police department. They had to get through that phase to get to the second phase, which was an interview, which was conducted in this room by myself, another chief, and the town administrator, and Sarah of Human Resources were observing. So there was a multitude of questions that were different than what you asked, and a little deeper, some of them were a little deeper dives, because their answers, we had much more time, then we could dive deeper into their answers. And so they had to get past that. And then, as you saw, there was a ranking in a report that was written and produced on each one of those candidates. And that was before they even got to this phase. This phase, you asked questions, you asked ethical questions, you asked, which is the, about the police officers getting in trouble. You asked operational questions, i.e., Selectman Forrest asked a question about operations. What's best proficiency effectiveness emerging our dispatches? That's a technical and administrative question, so you asked those types of questions. You responded to their answers with other questions. So you did a fairly decent dive and a decent probe into the way they're going to be, the way they're gonna be police chiefs, or what's there. And I would also say, they're interviewing for two jobs here, not just a chief. They're, they're here for the chief's job, but they're, depending on who the candidate that gets selected, there could be a second position here too. And they're also interviewing for that. That's, that's part of what they're, they're here for too, because there's a possibility of two jobs.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments, or especially something for the chief? Before we thank him for his services?
Thank him, I think is the important one.
Thank you, chief, we appreciate your help.
My pleasure, and, and I think I said to you last time I was here, that there are times when we would have to stand in front of you and say, I don't know if I would take any of them, you're very fortunate, you do have three viable candidates. Unfortunately, only one's gonna get the position, but you are fortunate that way. You've got, you have three viable candidates in front of you. And I'd like to thank you for your time, I enjoyed coming up here, it was great, great working with the board, and the town administrator, and Sarah, it was great to work with her. Chief Fredrickson, not so much, the chowder, the ice cream, I don't know.
You probably didn't bring him anything to eat.
Yeah, he didn't, yeah, he didn't bring anything here for me, but, but thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Bob, any concluding remarks or anything you want to say?
No, I, I thought the process was great, and, you know, I really echo the chief's sentiments. He, he said something that, you know, you can really pick up on. What was fascinating to me is that on a broad level, on very many of the policy issues, you know, there, there was a lot of consistency between the positions of the candidates on the various issues confronting, confronting the department. Where I saw differences was the, the height to which the discussion was brought. And, and, and I saw some clear differences in that, and in terms of how detailed and sort of three-dimensional the, the response to the same types of issues were, taking into account all of the, you know, intricacies and complexities of the process, you know, rather than having a, just focused on, you know, what, what their position would be. And, and I think through that process, you know, you could see, you know, the, the growth in that perspective. And, and a lot of what, what I look for, you know, is, is based in, in that more three-dimensional outlook that, you know, quite frankly, is developed over time. It's developed by having the, the types of experiences. But, you know, I, I was really blown away by all three of the candidates. And I, and I do want to say, they all did great in the first interview, and, and you could even see the growth in the individual candidates from one step in the process to the other. And I was extremely proud of, of the way they came in. I, I know, you know, you folks do this all the time, so it, it doesn't seem like it. But, you know, you need to know that it's a very intimidating part of the process for people that aren't used to interacting with the elective board and the elective officials directly to, you know, be in this position. And with that in mind, I, I was very proud of the professionalism, the, the poise that you saw tonight and, and the way they interacted with the board. So it, it left me with a real great feeling about the department.
I was hoping that we would get into more of a dialogue and an exchange, and I think that's what happened. I think the candidates were pretty relaxed and spontaneous in their answers. And they were prepared certainly, but I think. And, um, they were prepared certainly, but I think we got a, um, a legitimate view of, of their perceptions, their expectations, what they think they bring to the table, what they think their qualifications are. Um, and, and I thought they all handled the issues very well. And, and I would agree with you. I saw a certain level of maturity in all of the candidates. You could tell that, that this wasn't their first run, that they, they had been through, um, a lot of scrutiny. So that was good. Does anyone have anything further? Torquess?
I would just like to thank Chief Frederickson for his mentorship in his department. And I think you should do yourself proud that you had such, three such great candidates that came before us today. Thank you, chief.
That was a nice observation. I agree with that. Thank you, chief. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.